Where's our owly? Brenda, do you mind? I think the owly turned off. Do you mind just hitting the button again, please? Should be a power button. Yeah, it's right over there. Like, or in spritney?
That's the volume.
I just tested.
Do you feel like I was looking at you? Sorry.
Here. Can I see? Did somebody turn the power strip on? Is there a light on there? Is it in over there? I just tested everything.
There you go.
The eyes turned on.
It'll hoot.
You do that very well.
Yeah, that was. Like a great place to wave that was raining really hard.
If you're at home, we are just waiting for our owly to turn on.
Other lights on that side of the house.
Who did? Really, that was new, right?
Everything, right?
Yay.
That's very close to me tonight. Yes. Exciting. Yeah, great. Okay, and we have people that are. Okay, perfect. So we know that that's working. Okay, we're gonna go ahead and I'm gonna call the meeting to order at 6:33. And of course, on a night that we like moved ourselves forward in the room, we have more people here. And that's the way of it, right? When we shrink our space, more people come. So we are gonna go ahead and get started tonight. Our first agenda item is to approve the agenda. I have one agenda item I'd like to add. So after our superintendent search discussion before policies, I'm gonna add in a conversation about the progress monitoring committee and sort of the future of that committee and what the how the board sees using that group moving forward. So we'll add a progress monitoring committee discussion as number eight, and then we'll move the other two down. Any other changes or additions to the agenda tonight? Okay, so we need a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
A second.
I have a motion from Leslie and a second from Denise. So all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. And any opposed, say nay. All right, so the agenda is approved. So our first agenda item is public participation. We have some folks here with us in person. We also have people joining us virtually. Just a reminder for public participation, whether you're here in person with us, or if you're virtual, just start your remarks with your name and address so that we can have that in the record for our public participation policy. And just a reminder, we do ask that the comments be directed to the chair of the board and that there not be any kind of like personally identifying information in the comments. And if it is something that the board is gonna be taking up on the agenda later on, the board may just listen during that time and then we'll have our board conversation. The public participation is really just a chance for us to hear from the community and from the public. If there are simple questions or things that are easy and quick for us to answer, we may answer those during this time. But this really is the community's time. So we'll go ahead and open public participation and per our new way of managing that, we're just gonna note that it's starting at 6:35. And feel free if anyone in the room would like to speak, go ahead, or if there are folks virtually, you can go ahead and type into the chat. We do, be still, two, three years later, need hold music during.
We are in the music room.
Right? We could just.
I could do some boom wackers.
We should have been leveraging that this whole time. Like each time, we could have had like sleigh bells, maracas.
I was in preschool music the other day, playing with the boom whackers. It's like weapon music.
Has everyone signed in? Who says sign in?
I'm gonna leave our first opportunity for public participation open for another minute.
I do have to say, even without public participation, it's very nice to have public here.
Yes.
So thank you very much for coming.
Okay, so I'm gonna go ahead and close our first public participation. And per our board policy, we will reopen public participation at the end of the meeting tonight. So our first agenda item is the student school board liaison. So we have, is Ellen with us?
She has a swim meet tonight.
Okay.
She can't make it.
Okay, so we won't hear from our student school board liaison tonight, but we do have two folks who have provided their applications that the board received. And because there was personal identifying information and things like transcripts involved in those, the applications are not being shared publicly, but the board is gonna discuss those applications publicly. So the board can feel free to use those students' names in our conversation, just not any of like, we won't go into specifics about things like their grades or anything like that in our public conversation. So we have two applications from Dorothy Sears and Oliver Hermanson. So just to open the conversation, if the board has specific thoughts on if we'd like to appoint, you know, one more student school board liaison, if we'd like to have, you know, two, how we see us kind of moving forward with that can be part of the conversation. And then discussion of those two students who've put themselves forward to join us. Is there anything that anyone would like to share to kick that off that conversation?
I thought they were both really strong candidates, so I'm in favor of having both of them. I sort of feel like the more, the better to a certain point. But they're both really good candidates.
Yeah, I agree.
I feel like I'm just so pleased that we had two students really interested in giving up time at the end of a long school day to stay connected and be a liaison and.
And we have had three, previously, the board has had three student school board liaisons like serving at once, and it actually was nice because it took a little bit of the pressure off, especially during things like sports and other activities that students might be doing. If they're not able to make it to a meeting, they know that there's two other folks. I would say we probably only had a couple of meetings that all three could come to, and then the rest of the time, it was usually one or two that were able to be there. And so that three definitely wasn't too much in the past. Any other discussion about, or two?
Certainly excellent students.
One of my first board meetings was the meeting when Dorothy came and presented to the board about advocating for a new playground.
Yeah.
So, and I think she was in fourth grade. Yeah, I think she was in fourth grade then. So it's pretty amazing to see kind of that progression, and she has stayed involved in that process with the playground committee and helping to write grants for that project. So.
That's impressive.
Yeah.
She's a sophomore this year, is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
It does give you some perspective on how long that project has. Any other thoughts? It sounds like folks are in favor of maybe moving forward with both, with having two. Okay. So I would make a motion then for us to, or I would need a motion for us to appoint Dorothy Sears and Oliver Hermanson as student school board liaisons.
So moved.
I second.
Okay, so I have a motion from Leslie and a second from Nancy. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. All right.
Just as a follow up question, because I'll get in touch with them on behalf of the board.
Thank you.
When would you like them to start?
I think if they are available to come to the January meeting, absolutely. Yeah.
Yeah.
Excellent. And thank you to both of, both of you for both, to both of them for applying. We really appreciate it. Okay, our next agenda item are our budget functions for tonight. So the board has these budget areas in our packet. And I think we are starting with instruction.
I'm gonna pull this up. For anybody at home. This is where we're getting into the rotating, where it takes a little while to make everybody dizzy and. And we have the right direction.
A lot bigger.
And we're not gonna be able to see if I'm here. This is honestly for people at home. All of these documents are in the board packet online, as well as all of the backup information is on the back of each function. So as we go through these, when we look at regular instruction, as we start to go down, as we usually do line by line, in terms of instructional wages, there is a 3.42%, which is really just contractual increases. There are no staffing changes represented in that line. Regular ed summer programming, there's a decrease because you're gonna see that show up in its own function, but we're gonna need to have a discussion about that separately when we get to that function. Para educator wages, these are just our regular education paras, so not our special ed paras. Again, that's just the regular contractual increase right there. Mentors were able to take out of the title to a grant. Substitute teachers, we did increase based on usage. We, first of all, increased our sub rate, and secondly, we are in need of more substitutes these days than prior years. So that's an increase of $3,650. While we're saying it, thank you to all of our subs who accept our positions. Additional state pay for staff, this is nature's classroom. That's a decrease of $200, just based on the number of people who will be attending nature's classroom and the stipend that was negotiated in the collective bargaining agreement. The insurance buyout changes due to census changes and election changes. The leadership pool wages, we took that out of the collective bargaining agreement. So that's a decrease of $2,000. There's no, health insurance is always pulled out separately, as you know. The insurance deductible is stable as at $25,000. Dental insurance is pulled out. Life and disability is a very slight increase of $87. Social Security is a slight increase. Those are all obviously tied to salaries. So those are fixed percentages based on the salary increases, as is Medicare. And let's skip down. Retirement, as we mentioned, and some of the other functions is going down, which is unheard of and also nice. Instructional unemployment is also going down. Workers' comp, there's a very slight increase of $138. Certifications is based on the district paying for teacher recertifications, and that's just the number of teachers who are up for their three-year cycle next year times the state rate. Professional services for instruction. For a while, we eliminated ELL services from this line. And then we do have a lot of students moving in from other countries, which is very exciting, but it also means that we need to plan for additional ELL services. So we're putting this back in. Our reading specialist is ELL certified, and with a small number of students, she's able to cover those students with the increases that we've had. I think it's for just since the school year started that were unanticipated. We just need additional services there. Achievement test scoring stays the same. Enrichment activities is a slight increase, and the breakdown is in your budget in terms of everything that goes into those enrichment activities, which is nature's classroom, field trips, et cetera. The tuition, and you, you also got the tuition breakdown, the tuition spreadsheet. So the tuition is estimated at the middle school to be an increase of $197,093. And it's estimated at the high school to be a decrease of $198,050. I've never seen it be that close of a wash with our students coming and going, but that's what our projections are showing right now. Instructional supplies is slightly down, and thanks very much to Mrs. Reed for her careful. She does not, I wouldn't call it a careful scrutiny, but she makes sure that people are collaborating and sharing among classrooms of what they need and that everything that's purchased is aligning to the curriculum that we're using right now. So thank you very much to her for that. Workbooks is down 2,283 for the same exact reason. Textbooks, there's a slight increase in those for $164. Same thing with periodicals, $36. AV materials and software is a slight increase of $2,581. Meredith, you're gonna have to remind me of one thing that we just added there for that increase. It was Renaissance, right? Yeah. So we used to pay for our star testing, which is our progress monitoring assessment platform out of the REAP grant and the Title I grant combined. We just wanted to move it into the regular budget because we're going into our third or fourth year of using it. And those grants are starting to be decreasing statewide, and they're being sucked up with other things. So we just didn't want to lose the ability to purchase that software. New furniture and fixtures is an increase of 1,969, and Mrs. Reed and Mr. Campo went over a careful furniture replacement cycle. Again, looking at furniture that is consistent throughout the building to make sure that we can raise and lower chairs and tables and move them from place to place when we need them. And nothing for new equipment. So overall, 1,100, which is our main instructional line, is an increase of $49,573.06, which is a 0.93% increase.
Can I just speak to what I found today?
Yep.
Um, so today, somebody paid for the Scripps National Spelling Bee, and when they paid for it, we went, oh, we didn't put that in the budget for next year. So with enrichment, there is $175 that today we added to that line, so it is $175 more. But I just wanted to be transparent with you guys.
Now, the other thing that's in your board packet is a proposal for the shared curriculum instruction and assessment director, which is a shared position with Plainfield and Cornish. So interestingly enough, I had a board meeting with Cornish last night. I'm here tonight, and I have a board meeting with Plainfield tomorrow night. So literally three nights in a row, all three districts will be looking at this proposal. So this is a shared position, and I gave you a draft job description, which obviously will need more tweaking if this moves forward with all three districts. But to make a long story short, small districts, especially small elementary schools on their own, usually can't afford a director of curriculum instruction and assessment and sharing among these three elementary schools, which, for all intents and purposes, are almost all exclusively feeding into Lebanon, into the same place. There are several students from Cornish who go elsewhere, and several students from Plainfield who go to KUA, but the majority of students are winding up in Lebanon together. This is, we've talked a lot about sharing with these other districts, and this would be, I think, a really great opportunity to have this kind of a position in these districts and to be able to support the principals, especially who are doing so many other things in these, yeah, again, single school districts on their own to support staff, to constantly look at data of student achievement, to help make sure that curriculum cycles are moving forward as they should be, that they don't get put off because another priority is taking place, which happens very often. And also shared curriculum, professional development, possible sharing of resources, collaboration. In the small schools, we also have a lot of positions that are really isolated, and the idea, you know, that you can actually have a bigger group to work with and maybe calibrate student assessment work can make a really big difference. I promised all the districts I would give them feedback from the other districts. So Cornish currently has a ranking list of the things that are on the table for them, and just to let you know that the board would put this as their number one priority.
Is this, so this is not currently accounted in the budget?
It is not.
Okay, so this would be in addition to what was, what we just looked at.
Yeah. And if you look at the breakdown, Grantham would be a point four FTE. All-in salary and benefits would be an increase of 52,940. It would be the same for Plainfield, and then Cornish would be a point two, which would be 26,470. And I'd be happy to answer any questions, or Kristen would have to answer any questions. And also, Mrs. McGee, perhaps, because she was in a district that had this position.
We feel confident we can get someone for the 90,000 salary?
Yes. So it's, it's a little bit tricky because this is again, like threading the needle, because that's gonna be at the top of your teacher scales for these. So you wanna be as high as your teacher scales, but at the same time, your principals that are about 100,000. You know, so starting out, we feel confident that about 90,000 is about where somebody should begin.
And the market bears that?
Yes.
Currently, there is no curriculum specialist in either of these three.
No, none of the three districts has them.
Principals pretty much have to do all of this with an amazing staff.
Yes.
Any discussion, who would?
I would prefer if Grantham owns the position and then gets the revenue from Plainfield and Cornish. That would be my recommendation.
Any talk on Cornish aside about that last night?
No. My rec, and the reason I'm recommending that is that Plainfield and Cornish already share a lot of positions, and they already juggle a lot of who owns what and who pays the other, and it makes their budgets sometimes hard to decipher for the community. And I think if we're entering into sharing, it would be great if we owned the position and they could just have a straight cost that we pick up as revenue.
Kristen, are there things that you have on your list of like, if you had the time to, that having someone in this position that you think are, what would this enable you to be able to do either more of or better or to increase?
Well, I think honestly that like I do the best I can stretching myself. But I would love to see this position because it would be someone that could really put the time and energy into curriculum where it needs to be. You know, I'm giving this little bit of time to it, and staff is amazing on their, you know, literacy committee, math committee, or whatever, but they also have everything else they're doing. So it could just be someone devoted to that. And I think it would really be super beneficial in terms of helping to make sure the curriculum follows a path through Grantham Village School and then aligns with what they're gonna be doing over in Lebanon. And I just think that would be fabulous, something with the time to really put the effort into it.
Sydney, do you have a sense of how similar or different curriculums currently are between the three schools? Like, would this, would it be, would we, would we be setting someone up to be unnecessarily challenged or frustrated by three different sets of moving parts? Or are they?
Right. So when you think of curriculum, you never think of a program, right? The only thing that I would have some questions about would be math.
Okay.
Because Grantham Village School is very different in the sense that we do everyday math, and Plainfield and Cornish do eureka math, and those are pretty significantly different approaches. So we would have to figure something out there. But in anything else, a curriculum is never the program that you buy. So the way that you wanna think of it is that everybody, the way I usually explain it is that everybody has the same nutritional standards. They're all meeting the same competencies, but everybody uses different recipes. Everybody has different flavors, different meals that they like, but as long as you're doing the same standards, it's okay that you still get to the same place. And a good curriculum director will be able to facilitate that and encourage that.
What would happen if not all three districts? What do you foresee happening if like just two districts voted in?
Yeah, and that came up in Cornish last night. So you would have to decide if one of the districts decided not to move it forward in their budget, if you wanted to do it as a two-way split, which would obviously pretty dramatically change the cost and then go from there or wait until another year where maybe all three would go in again.
When do we have to make a final determination on this?
February, when you go to your public hearing, you really want this in place. So you still have a couple of months to think about it, to hash it out, to get more feedback. I can let you know what Plainfield discusses tomorrow night, but so far, I can tell you that they're very much in favor of it for all of the same reasons.
Yeah, I don't necessarily think it. I think it's a good idea. I'm a little nervous on getting to it before we see the full budget and what we're looking at, because I'm assuming there will have to be some cutting somewhere at some point in time, given just the inflation and everything else that we're seeing.
Does our timeline match up with their timelines for preparing their budgets?
Yeah.
Like, do any of them need to make a decision on it before February?
No, actually, of the three districts, we're the first.
Okay.
Yeah. Which is good in sense of alignment, because if we own it, we're the ones who have to decide if it actually goes in.
Right. Okay, I think my feeling on it is, let's put it kind of at, you know, up there on that list of things that we'll look at once we have, like I've said, the whole budget picture. But I, I think overall, it sounds like the conversation is, you know, we're in favor of, of continuing to talk about it. It's not something that we're opposed to. So, yeah, let's keep it at the, towards the top of that list of things that we'll consider when we get the full budget.
All right.
Any other thoughts on that, on that position? And also, any other thoughts or questions about the instruction budget function? Okay, so we'll move on to, I think guidance is our next.
No, I think we're going to summer school.
Yeah. Oh, yep.
So this is a separate function because pre-pandemic, the Grantham Village School only did summer school for special education and students at risk. That was generally the summer programming. So it was largely IEP and sort of intervention driven. When the pandemic hit, the board funneled a lot more money into summer programming through grants and through some district's funds to be able to catch more kids. And we have seen some results of having more kids in summer program, not just limiting it to identified students or students at risk. But now is basically the time for the board to start deliberating if you wanna continue that practice. So do you want to go back to ESY programming the way it was, where it was pretty much special education and at risk? If you want to include or continue to include other students who are basically invited to attend summer school, the total cost would be $18,575. So this is actually an entirely new function.
While we're looking at, I do have papers to pass out. It's just the data from summer school this summer. We did, we looked at testing in the spring versus testing in the fall. We looked at general education, special education, and then students who were invited to attend but chose not to attend, just to see what the growth was, whether it was whether the benefit that we think it is. So I'll pass it out. The yellow is the kind of like the overall summary.
So was it correct to assume that if this is something we wanted to sort of revert back to, if I were previously, the entire 18,000? If this is something we wanted to sort of revert back to, if I were previously, the entire eighteen thousand go later?
Yes. Yeah. There, there could be maybe a slight increase in, in some of the summer school program and that you would see in twelve hundred. At our next meeting in January, because we'd probably have to pull in some at-risk kids, but the majority of the eighteen thousand would go away.
So Kristen, I'm assuming you want to focus on the yellow box?
Yeah, that's, I took all the information and then put it there to help you to see it better. And not all the students had a before and after, so I didn't count them in the, in the percentages. And then. It's important to note that. The testing that we use, the Renaissance Star. Very often, well, first, we didn't do it. Before this year, we didn't administer it higher than third grade, so some kids aren't, don't have a before and after for the higher grades. And then for some of the testing, the end of, like, for example, the end of first grade test is different. Than the beginning of second grades, it's not comparing. The exact same test, so it's, you know, there's some discrepancy, but it's, it's what we have.
Any? Further digging into? Why your special education half the students that attended actually went down? Year over year?
Nikki, do you have any thoughts on that?
I don't, I haven't looked at that closely and I haven't looked at which difference or differentiated that.
Sure.
But. Typically, special education service, students will require additional services.
Right.
The purpose of their summer program is to try to prevent regression. So.
Am I, but am I reading that correctly, that fifty-four percent of whom did regress? Year over year, is that, am I?
Okay.
Yeah.
Based on the star test. So. You know, we look at other. Assessments for their progress, because sometimes that star testing is. Not as accurate, because it's not a leveled. Assessment. You know what I mean? Like, you might be giving them a test that's above their grade level, so they're not accessing and able to demonstrate progress.
Got it, okay.
I'm also thinking, Kristen, that. We, we focus so much on tests, but it's the skills, the social skills that are not measured in this. And coming off of the pandemic and adjustment, I, you know, I wish there was a chart that would just. Show where. Things were.
And that's one of the things I think I talked to you about last summer or the end of last summer is that it was amazing, the kids who. Honestly, when they're in the regular school year, they might not feel all the successes and they might not feel like a good student. But in the summer, they're successful and they want to be here and we had one kid. Who his sister wasn't invited, but she asked if she could please come because he was having such a good time and that's pretty amazing.
And what was this, the approximate student enrollment for the summer school?
Will we go from number three to number forty, so thirty-seven?
Would that, if, with the. Program that's in the requested budget, would the program stay about that size or would this increase the size of it, decrease the size of it?
So we actually invited about.
Fifty.
Fifty, and we could have. We could have housed fifty.
Okay.
Well, I enjoyed watching the kids when I was painting, watching all the fun stuff going.
And sort of that, the last row there, the average number of days attended, seventy-six percent, seventy-two, was that? They attended seventy, seventy-six percent of the available days, is that what that's?
And that's just the nature of summer?
Yeah, absolutely.
So do you have any other questions or do you want to revisit this next time?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think this will definitely be. Yeah, okay, yeah, as a whole new thing, we'll review it when we see our overall budget number. Alright, so next up is.
School counselor. So in the school counselor function, things are staying relatively fatal. These are largely just the usual employee increases and the accompanying benefits. The only difference that we have is that we did. Add in, we have this in a different place in the budget, we had money in eleven hundred, I believe. Where was that? I'm trying to remember where we had it. We had fifteen thousand dollars for mental health counselor. When we decided to eliminate the social worker position, so the correct place for it is actually in. The school counselor line, so you'll see fifteen thousand dollars there for contracted service. That is something that I think if we had not had this year, I. Can't imagine where we would be without that, so that's not the total cost, there's about twenty thousand that's. Additional, that is twenty-one thousand to be exact, that's covered through grants.
Is that what's coming out under contracted services later on in that same?
Is it?
It's in the, well, number is it?
Yes, because it moved from contracted service to employee.
Okay, yeah. So it's all still within the same function?
Still within the same function, yeah, and then we just have all of those related costs for a very slight increase of three thousand thirty-two dollars.
Any questions on this area?
Okay.
Alright. Next up, health?
Okay, health services is very similar, it's basically extremely stable. The usual employee salary and accompanying benefit changes for a slight increase of. One thousand seven hundred thirty-four dollars, which is an increase of one point seven five percent. Any questions from the board? On this area?
Okay, thank you.
Conference and course reimbursement. There is an increase in course reimbursement, which is due to the C B A. The total is twenty thousand, but that's an increase of two thousand five hundred. Conference reimbursement, we're keeping stable as it is. Staff training, there's a slight increase of nine hundred dollars. Mrs. Reed already has specific allocations for that for Cafe, I believe. Which is going to support our literacy work. And the same thing for professional books, a slight increase of three hundred and twenty dollars. So the total line is an increase of three thousand seven hundred twenty dollars, which for that line is twelve point two seven percent. For that function. Twelve point two seven percent. Any questions on that one? Alright. Next, library. And we have Mr. Pollard here. I'm going to go through some of the boring lines and then I'm going to let Mr. Pollard do the fun stuff.
Always.
Alright, do we have to read Andy Pushups?
Because we were just coaching, right?
Alright, so wages librarian, that's a contractual increase right there. We have and step and track changes are included there. We have some basic insurance and other associated benefit costs as you're skipping all the way down. Library online, there is a slight decrease. And that again is similar to when I complimented Mrs. Reed before about her. Really looking at our resources and being able to target what people are using and what we really need, Mr. Pollard did the same exact thing. So thank you very much for that. Library supplies is staying level. Library of books is also staying level or slightly down fifty dollars. Periodicals, we don't have anything in there. Library software, I'll let you talk about that one, which is the Destiny Manager.
Yes, our library management software that controls all of our collection of our books is just a slight normal inflation.
And then. We have library furniture and renovations, and if you just tell me when you want me to change the slide, I have it up here ready for you.
So this is really the only line that you'll see the increase in, and exactly from zero. Balance now, so I'm proposing a little bit of a furniture renovation plan that I thought was my entire department for basketball. So my proposal, a three-year proposal, but I believe you have a letter in your board packet that says you just copy, if you'd like a copy of kind of the three-year overall plan. Your one is the budget for twenty or approximately twenty chairs designed for primary students right now. As you'll see, the chairs we have in the library currently are not really geared for primary students. Your two would be the additional chairs for intermediate students, and again, twenty is an approximate number, I want enough for everybody to have a seat and maybe a triple extra. And then your three would be table replacement. And with flexible seating, flexible tables in the library, so you can switch to me. So current setup, you see, and we have, I should say this, I love my space, I love my job. I will work with whatever I have, so if this stayed the same for the next twenty years, fantastic, I will make it work. And they work and they're functional and I can't say that they're not, but. That is our current setup, we kind of, I have enough tables and chairs to house the biggest class and then some. But as you can see, the tables and chairs are very bulky, they're very big. And if you go one more, Sydney, so there's my friend, I in kindergarten. In the wooden chairs, kindergarten, first and second grade, they're super big and they're not the safest thing for them to sit in and most of the time they're on their knees. And if you go one more, they end up like that. Remove the back of the chair. Again, not super safe and the intermediate kids, they'll lean, these chairs are really easy to lean back in and they're super heavy and not very balanced, so I haven't had anybody fall over yet, but it is, is a concern. And then if you shift one more. This is kind of what I'm envisioning, flexible seating, not just chairs with stools and other things that are flexible and then tables that are hopefully at least. Chairs that are stackable, number one, because as you know, and as many of you know, I'm a huge advocate of movement. And even if you're in the library, there's still movement, so if I can stack chairs and just push the wooden chairs out of the way, that'd be fantastic. And then if you go one more, this is the last one. Again, just maybe things on wheels, things in different shapes, things that kind of need more collaborative, so we can work in groups. So again, that's my vision. Again, I love where I am, I love my space, so don't feel obligated, but it's something that I'm looking forward to.
And the cute little girl made me my necklace today.
So and just on that line, for year one, it's approximately a twenty-three hundred dollar increase to purchase this one chair. Again, and that number, I can totally research more, I just kind of went to Demco, which is the traditional library company. And looked at kind of some seating that would work, but I'm not sold on anything yet, I want to do some more research if this goes through.
Any questions for Mr. Pollard?
I appreciate you asking for this because you're seeing that little girl in that big chair. We, we need appropriate seating for the kids that we have. Looks like this furniture's been well-loved for many years.
And I have kind of asked, I know, obviously, I, I'm. I hate to get rid of things that are useful and our table and chairs, I know for a fact that the tables will be used elsewhere, all of them. Those chairs, I'm not quite sure where they would go, but I know for a fact that the table would be. Repurposed somewhere else for sure, if that. Do you have a, do you have a ballpark price? For all three years? Yeah, it's in the letter and I can, I can, I think it's about eighty-four hundred total. And again, that's four chairs, forty chairs is honestly probably more than I need. But the tables are what really gets expensive, yeah, and again, I'm not, I put a sample table in the letter and then. But I'm not sold yet on what table exactly wants. And I'm assuming the chairs would work with the tables you currently have. Yeah, honestly, they're, they're just more of a, again, size difference for primary kids. Stackable and not as bulky and big, really, yeah. But yes, they would totally work with our current winged tables for her.
I love thinking about our library being more collaborative and more full of movement and action and change.
And if you came or went while at least that last year, this year, I am able to change that big, we had the book fair, the book fair is in there, it fits just fine, I moved the table and chairs out of the way. So it's, I can't say that it's not working, but it just would be more ideal to have a little more flexibility.
Sydney, do you have a sense of? The current climate of like grants for this type of, you know. Creating more flexible spaces, I know when the first grade classroom had the. We're doing that trial run of. Of more flexible seating, you know, if, if that's something that's kind of out there right now for.
Reap would be our only avenue right now that could be something that. We will likely get next year, it's never guaranteed. So we could say that we would earmark some reap money for this if you wanted to take it out of the budget, but other than that. It would have to be a competitive grant and those are pretty competitive these days.
Yeah, yeah. Has that furniture? I think it, it seems like it would be amazing to have, have, has that been a? A good change in the classrooms that have had some of that more flexible seating and different, different types of tables and that kind of stuff?
It has, and I think. You might be to speak more to it, when I had it, I loved it, but I hear like some teachers really love it and some prefer the traditional. Is that what you hear too from people? So, but for the most part, I think people who love it, love it.
Thank you. Hey, should we, other, any other questions? For that piece, okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
Moving on to technology. So we do have one big thing to talk about in the middle of the technology budget. So for, we have, going through the usual no staffing changes, but the usual increases plus associated benefits. So the first change that we would come down to would be G B S Technology Services. That is just basically, we would be looking at the change, Randy, do you want to go through these lines?
Sure.
And do you want me to pull up the four options onto the screen?
I was actually going to ask if we could talk about that particular line item last.
Okay.
We'll just go through the rest of it all first.
Then you take them through your lines and tell me when to put the bids up.
So for G B S Technology Services, I have an increase of about six hundred sixty-eight dollars that represents about. Four, not quite five percent over that and what that has to do with. Technology services are things like the rental of our firewall, the backup for the server. Contingency, if we ever had some sort of a technology problem, we had to use I T security to come in and help with that. It pays for things like our domain names for the internet. You know, G B S hawks dot com, S A U seventy-five dot org, sorry, I say com dot org. It also pays for things like the service we use for monitoring. The kids' Chromebooks while they're in class, so that the teacher can see what they're doing. And I'm contemplating switching that tool from one tool to another. We did have an issue last year where. Because of a Google update or something, that service went offline for about two months. And we took that time to evaluate another tool at the exact same time, so we used the other tool to kind of cover the gap. That was. Go Guardian was that tool, that's way expensive, so I started looking at some other tools that were out there, and so I'm contemplating. Changing to this tool called Securely, which I think Sydney said some other districts nearby have had some very good success with. So we're currently evaluating that, it represents, you know, six hundred bucks more than the other tool. So I budgeted for that on the assumption that we would probably move to that. So that's what the difference is in your budget. For this line. The next line I had, what did you have next, Sydney?
Technology P D is contractual, so technology enrichment is the tech team, that's the same four hundred dollars. So then we're getting to G B S telecommunications management.
Right, can I skip that one, we'll just go down to. Technology supplies.
Yeah, so that's like the grand finale is the telecommunications management.
So technology supplies is just our repair parts, toner, general supplies, I think I added like five hundred bucks extra for that. You know, it says fourteen percent, but you know, that's five hundred dollars. Next was technology software. Next was technology software. That line is. Up about ten dollars. Uh, that's our Microsoft licensing. You know, basically you have to pay Microsoft. In order for our server to work and let's have Word and Excel for. Meredith. And Brenda. Um, but that they have a set amount that you just pay and it is what it is. So that didn't change much for technology software. Um, replacement technology, it says technology replace computers. I think this one actually has gone down from uh last year pretty significantly. What that decrease is, is the, we aren't buying the new microphones in all the classrooms. Uh, I am getting awesome feedback on those new mics, by the way. I had um Jen Coad just said, I love the new mic to me literally yesterday without a problem. So just didn't say that. So it's, it's working out great. Everybody loves it. It seems like it's good. Uh, but the things that replacement technology is going to buy for us next year is the old round of Chromebooks. We'll be buying forty Chromebooks at about two seventy five each. Uh, we're back into the buy cycle for staff. Computers. So we're going to buy ten of those and that's on a four year cycle. Buy for three, one year we skip. So we're past, last year was the buy year. Buy E Y D, not the U Y.
Right.
Buy your life for that. So that'll buy ten new MacBooks and that will also roll. Kind of a downhill to the library where they'll have a second life uh with the students and for substitutes, things like that. And it will also be uh replacing ten iPads with that. So the bottom line for replaced computers was twenty two thousand, which is down from thirty five thousand last year. Uh, and then I think I have. Technology equipment, that's fifteen hundred dollars for printer replacements. We have a couple of very old printers still kicking around that service this whole side of the building. And they've been here as long as I've been here, probably a long time before that too. So that's what that is. So to get to telecommunications management for GBS. Um, have some of that is for our internet service that we get through First Light. Um, I think it's like nine thousand bucks for that, but we get half of that back for you rate uh through doing the paperwork, which I do. And typically we've been paying on the order of about fifteen hundred, sixteen hundred bucks a year just for the phone lines, main phone lines come into the building. Uh, the telephone system in this building is ancient. It's again, it's been here since long before I was here. We've actually had this past year, two of the extensions stopped working. Uh, I was able to kind of move a plug from one thing together to keep them working, but it's a legacy PBX telephone system. It's also not compliant with what the law wants us to have, which is something where we pick up the phone and dial and it doesn't just tell the address for nine one one. It tells you the floor and the room that you're in. The state passed a law that said any new phone systems have to have that. And it's a homeland security thing. So we are overdue for that and um. So uh, I, we put out an RFP for that. Uh, we've got four responses to the RFP uh from First Light. Which is our vendor for that. Uh, we've got one from IT Secure, which is our second level support uh group. Uh, we've got one from uh Ring Central that I solicited because I knew some of the users Ring Central. Uh, and then we had another one from Zoom that I also solicited. It came out through Zoom and through Excel right there. So um, Sydney, I guess if you wanted to, you could put that out. But basically. The. The main thing that's happened since the technology was implemented before is that it's all now in cloud. There's no longer a box that sits back in a room like we have now. It's all. Up there. And basically the telephones themselves, you plug in and they connect to the internet to your PBX and it allows you to. Deal with situations where the power's out, where you have to move everywhere, like we had during COVID, you know, those sorts of things. It allows you to have a virtual thing, but it comes with a bunch of other benefits too. When you virtualize this stuff, it does things like transcribes all your voicemail and emails if you. Uh, it allows you to um forward calls, you know? Wherever they have these things called soft phones where you use a school phone number, but you basically have an app on your cell phone. And the Zoom guys are letting me test it, but the. Other ones did too, but it basically just locks up on your phone unless you dial out with a. School telephone number. So there we go. Yeah. See, that's actually Zoom on my phone. So. If all these extra services are potentially what comes with it. So of those four. Um, they all have a month free date that comes with this. And so the days of us paying fifteen hundred bucks for all the phone services in this building are long and dark.
Yes.
Sadly, um, the range for that basic service. Um, the Zoom ones, if you calculate that, it's like two hundred eighty three bucks a month. So they have like an annual thirty four hundred bucks for just the basic service. Uh, to compare that to First Light, theirs is like thirty four hundred bucks, thirty five hundred bucks. Unless you included the equipment mental, which was like forty two hundred bucks. IT Security was like sixty five hundred bucks and Ring Central was like eleven thousand bucks. When you look at what the service is for what they're providing. Um, on top of that is the new phone equipment that would have to go in. So we have um. I think there's something like thirty five standard telephones around the building. And I think we have four of the fancy schmancy ones that have to be in front office for them to do their work. But you know, based on the, the equipment costs. They're fairly standard in terms of what you would buy for the phone equipment. The other question about the cert, the new phone system is where would we put the phones? Because they can plug into any internet connection. We could theoretically plug them into our. Ethernet outlets around the room and just abandon the old set. But then your phones aren't by the door. Then it's, so we could use all the existing wiring in the building. Basically, we terminate all of these. Where the ansets are and put the internet ones on, put a switch in the back room. And that would become our new phone system. So there's some expense associated with doing that work, re terminating wires, installing all of that. Of the four bids that we got, only one of them actually included that work. Including the setup too. Um, so when looking at how these things compare. You have to understand that only one of them really had the bid complete to do everything turnkey like it was asked. I probably have the skill set to do it for the other three. It's just re terminating wires, but there's, you know, forty five phones in our building. This is the system we need to depend upon for our nine one one service. You'll want to make sure it's done professionally and correctly. Not that I can't do that. But um, it's something to consider when looking at what these bids are. Um, I just received the last bid from Zoom on Friday. Um, I'm still kind of punching this in my head about what it means. I did talk to some of the references, one of the schools that's using this is Nottingham School District. I talked to their IT director. Um, I, they didn't give me his name. I just called him and he answered and we talked about it. He said the cost upfront was a little bit more than some of the other ones, but he said the phone system's been great. They've had it for two years. I think it's fantastic. And. That was the Zoom system that they have. Basically what it is, you're all familiar with how Zoom works. Um, it would basically add another thing in your account that would be a telephone. And it would transcribe your email and your voicemail and all that language stuff with it. I am not prepared at this moment to make a recommendation about which one to choose. I think I might narrow it down to between uh the IT Sec, not IT Secure, sorry, um. First light and you know, the, the Zoom one.
Can you just uh take the board through the four costs? So they like for the public record, we have the four bids that came in.
So uh, the first one that I have on the top. You know, the B D dot was the Zoom one that I received. Um, their total bid turnkey was twenty five thousand two hundred and seventy five dollars for this year. To break that down, about twelve thousand dollars of that is the install work. And equipment and one year subscription is about twelve thousand dollars. So half of it is equipment and one year service. The other half is the install. This has the lowest long term annual cost after that. It's about thirty four hundred bucks a year thereafter for the subscription. So. You'd have the big cost upfront, but every year after that, you'd be paying thirty four hundred bucks for the bell service in the building. There is potentially some other things to be gained from this highlighter. Too much. Uh, things like the phones over at the SAU would simply just be four more extensions on that account. Uh, we also are paying Zoom for full Zoom licenses for about twenty five members of the staff and we could either eliminate or roll that into some of this box potentially. Um, the next one from First Light. Uh, the, the annual. Cost, well, they, they broke it out two ways in terms of how the equipment went. We could either buy the equipment outright. Or we could lease the telephones and such from them. So if we bought the equipment outright from them. Their uh, their costs for the first year is nine thousand dollars. Uh, annually after that, it's about four thousand dollars. This does not include installing any of this. Um, if we leased the phones. It would simply be fifteen hundred bucks a year. For everyone. Um, leasing, leasing, leasing the phone. Talking with the guy about the phone equipment, how long does it last? We, we'd really be better to buy it or not. He said he knows some places that have equipment that's fifteen years old and it's still working despite. So it's a question of whether you want to pay now or you want to delay it.
Is leasing, I'm sorry, this is great time for a question. Uh, because leasing, leasing include maintenance if there's problems with it.
It would include maintenance for that. That's part of, you know, each one of these bids um include a sort of warranty and service element to all of the equipment that comes with it. So. Uh, again, first light, nine thousand, if you buy it outright annually, otherwise it's about fifteen. So the next bid was from IT Secure, which is our other contractor who does all of our contracted services at the second level, maintains the server and all of that. Their cost was fourteen thousand for all the equipment in one year of service. And then uh sixty five hundred bucks thereafter. He did say that because they're already, were already a client, they probably would be onsite and assist with the install, although they didn't say that it would be installed. Um, and the service that they use at IT Secure is called GoTo. That's actually the exact system they're using at the SAU currently. Is that's a thing we contracted IT Secure. Uh, the last one is Ring Central. They were just expensive. Yeah, eleven, eleven thousand dollars a year just for my phones, period. Phones and equipment, first year seventeen thousand dollars. Again, no installation.
Probably safe to say we can knock them off the list. Narrow it down to three.
Yeah, I'd say, yeah, free. Uh, so. What to do about this from a budget standpoint, my recommendation would be to put in the twenty five thousand into the budget right now, depending upon the decision that you make. That could potentially be considerably lower. If you went with a different vendor or we made the decision that I was going to install it or we tackled with these guys a little bit about some of the install because again, I just got their bid. Haven't had a chance to go back and say, what are we really buying for this twelve thousand dollars in service? Install service. I think you could probably come down on that.
And that's not, that's not in here right now, right?
At the very top, yes, that is reflected. So that twenty five thousand two seventy five is legit turnkey. They would come in and install it and.
But it's not on our budget.
It's not on your. Sorry, I apologize. What I put into the budget line here was the first bid that I had when I did my budget this evening, which was the IT Secure one, which was the third one down third most expensive. So that one was.
Thirteen.
Thirteen two?
Yeah. Something like that. I think that's what.
So really, if we ended up in twenty five, we'd be going with. Roughly a seventeen thousand dollar increase in the active market compared to the five. Right to six hundred.
But that would include the full installation and your out years are simply going to be thirty five hundred bucks, thirty one hundred bucks thereafter.
On, on the leased equipment, how, how quick, how often do they turn that stuff over? Uh, new stuff.
I think that it would probably be on a, a five to ten year cycle, depending upon what's going on with your program. Um, I think that's their payback for it. The advantage of a leased set of equipment is of course, you're always current. If something breaks, they just give you another one. Um, I will say that the unit cost for those things is not terribly high, I think. Purchase auction, yes. Thirty five dollars for one of the. One of the phones with an eighty three cent, you know? You know, eighty three cent maintenance. You know, the expensive phones are around ninety two bucks. So. You know, buying them outright is not, not a bad option. Um, and in fact, that's what all the other bids were. You know, the first one from Zoom, that's buying the, the equipment out right. Has all the support to go with it. But you know, those are probably, used to be Polycom, Polycom, so one of those is eighty three bucks. The other one's two hundred eighty nine for the fancy ones. So um, I've learned a lot about telephone service this past month and a half.
It's been a lot of research.
I did talk to the guys at Wavecom up in West Left, who are more traditional telephone PBX type. Guys um about that. He was thinking he might want to bid on it. He even got on the phone and talked to the, to the um. First light guys about the service side and he did the wiring piece. And in the end, he decided that. He was worried that he would not be able to comply with the nine one one style. And he had never done it before and he said, ah.
We all look at, um, you know, our national news and, and um safety of our children. And if we have a system that is not compliant with. Communications for keeping our kids as safe as possible. I think that's. It's inexcusable not to have protections there.
Yeah, I would be clear that the current system right now, if you don't nine one one it will tell you seventy five million drive and they are here quick. When that happens, this is an extension of that. So they would know exactly what room picked it up. It would also give nine one one the ability to call back into that room. Which is really what it's about, you know, is if somebody dials nine one one from a building to hang up, they can dial back to that location and be able to reconnect the, the communications.
Any other questions?
Just, just simply, how are we gonna? And we've got, we essentially at this point have about half of that system in this budget right now.
You, the board's gonna have to, the, the board will have to deliberate this and you, you went out to bid for this. So you have four bids that came in and at some point you're going to have to accept one of those four bids. That'll determine which direction that you go in and what goes in the budget.
I'll just, yeah, I'm just thinking four from a. If we piecemeal this budget together. We've got about half of what said twenty five thousand already baked in. Do we just throw another additional twelve thousand on the? To talk about list or? That's, that's the way then we'll hung up on this. How do we? How do we sort of earmark this so it doesn't get lost?
Well, I.
End of January, we do this.
At, every time we go through one of these budget things, I keep a running list of the things that you're going to talk about before you finalize the budget. So this is automatically on the list.
I would be glad to come back once we sorted this out and gotten some more feedback and talk to you again.
Thank you.
Um, about that and.
Yeah, and if I'd be completely honest, I would. If it's possible, I would help do your recommendation for me. If it's possible, I would help do your recommendation for minimum restrictions if you'd like to go and do those.
We've talked so much about that. These are so many different complicated options.
I have to say, it would be really cool to do the Zoom thing and I think the price is right for that. The thing that's killing me is the install. If we decided that we actually didn't care about the phones being at the front of the road. I could just plug them all into the wall and they would work just as well. Um, is that the right choice? I, I don't know if I'm ready to make that recommendation one way or the other yet at this point. How do I feel about doing the installation? If I was Brandon who's been through it, I would be very busy during the summer, but I'm confident I would do it correctly. Uh, am I a professional? Well, a professional. A professional wire installer? No, but I have re-terminated at least one of those phone extensions because I was troubleshooting the other system. It's not rocket science.
In, in that, in the line that it's in, what is, so if we added the thirteen twenty or the thirteen thousand. On top of the six that was the. From previous, what is that six? What else lives in that line that we need to fund?
So the other things that live in that line are just the internet within the building.
Okay.
So it's, it's basically five thousand dollars for internet.
Okay, so we need the five plus the twenty five. Potentially for the, okay, all right, so there's, there's some stuff in that line that we need in addition to this project.
Correct.
Okay.
So I. Think I would recommend we throw the twenty five thousand dollars. Additional, well, the additional twelve thousand, I guess, into the budget to make that line on, you know, roughly thirty one thousand.
And then look at, see what that looks like.
To the list and then we'll, we'll talk about it sort of at the end and all the numbers shake out and.
Yeah, I just, yeah, that was that. Perfect.
Okay.
Excellent, thank you.
Sure, any other budget question? You why I saved it for the last? I see none of it.
That is our last budget function for tonight, any questions or thoughts? Go Ian, go for budget function. Okay. Our next agenda item is the website preview and I assume you are. We're blowing right into Mr. Breton again.
Absolutely. Do you have the URL for the new site?
I know, I have it in my email, but I haven't had.
Uh, it's just G D S Hawk. By Ed Leo School dot com. And I would invite all the board to write that down because you're welcome to look at it and play with it.
Let me give that one more time. E D S Hawks.
G D S Hawks dot Ed Leo School, E D L I O School dot com.
And quite literally look at that work of art.
Ooh, ooh.
So this is uh the draft of the new website, um, they migrated all of our content over. Um, we're currently validating that all the pages are what we hope them to be. Um, we are working on. Delegating authority to edit the pages to the appropriate people. Training them on how to do that so that we're ready for a launch of the new webpage in a year. Really near, like as soon as we get back from break and this, this holiday break is building in time. So, um. This is the result of a lot of work on the part of the committee. Um, deliberating what we wanted it to look like or content we wanted to have in it and navigate through it. Uh, some of the key features that are there, Sydney, if you want to go up to the top. And just go along the top, you can see that there are sub menus for each of the main menus at the top. The things at the top have to do with G D S itself, things like our family handbook, school nurse. So it's broken down for fam, resources for families, for students, uh, for the staff. Uh, and what we're calling beyond the classroom, which is things like Destiny and Imagination, the after school program clubs. Uh, morning program athletics, we connect to the Grantham Athletic Department so that they can see all the sports stuff too. Below the top menu, we have our hub, which goes out to the community. Uh, has links also to Grantham Rec, Town of Grantham, Dunbar Free Library, School Board. Um, and we spent.
That's great.
Uh, we have links here that go off to the high school, it also has a special section for the buses for Grantham for the seven through twelve. Uh, student services for people who are at the middle and high school. Uh, as well as links to all of the key other sites that are, are older Grantham residents who go to those schools are interested in. Uh, and the last part of the hub is of course the district itself, the S A U and the standard S A U uh links that we have. Uh, we have a button there for something called Why Grantham that we are still in the process of developing that um.
Sure, um, when we were looking at uh websites, we saw a lot of schools had, you know. Why Newport, you know, why Bo, those kind of things, so we're doing Why Grantham and it's basically a, a one page. If you never uh heard of Grantham any, you know, before you'd be able to look at this really nice one page. Graphic of everything that we love about Grantham, Grantham Village School and our secondary opportunities for students in our community. And some of our, like a quick stats page. And I will say that um Lauren Loos, uh, our para is also a graphic designer by trade and she's doing that for us.
So the top line um menu is all about navigating to specific areas and getting a contact all the, the various places evergreen. That people want, but as you know, parents want stuff now and something one is the lunch menu, calendar, bus routes, preschool, pickup patrol. Alma and the store where they can go buy their Grantham gear. So all of those are key buttons right on the main page. Uh, when you bring this up on an iPhone, the buttons are right there and you just go click. And you get directly to the main sites that, that people who are in a hurry want to get to. Uh, the, the pictures that are wrote scrolling through here, this is sort of our hero photos. Uh, that we can change and update as, as we find, but those are things that are intended to be longer term. Uh, images for the school and as we scroll down. We think this really nice.
That scroll, by the way, isn't that nice to me?
Yeah, out there starts here, this is our philosophy for the school and a, a nice little line drawing there. We want to update that in the future, that's easy to do. Uh, and then this links directly to our Google Calendar, so you can see the school board meeting is right up there. Um, without me having to do anything, it just is part of our process, which is really the idea behind this site in the first place is that as people do their jobs. Information will flow to places where people can go get it pretty easily. So this shows you the top three upcoming events, if you want to see the whole scal, calendar, you can click show all events and it will. Do a very nice custom page that has all of our calendar stuff there. Uh, next. Recent news, it has sort of the three top stories that we posted recently uh on the website up here and it shows all news. Um, one thing that's really nice about this site. And you know, I know you got a lot of things to get to, uh, so I won't show it tonight, but there's a really nice interface for staff and Kristen and others. To just take a news story, take, attach a photo to it and hit submit and it goes right to the website. And post it to our Facebook page and goes to Twitter and goes to all of our other social media stuff. Uh, and it stores those all up, we can have it posted when we want, come down when we want. Uh, Kristen can pull those into the newsletter and use the tool to build a newsletter. It's pretty cool. So that's a peek at the new website.
Awesome, just to give you some of the, um. Oh, this was part of our strategic plan where the board really wanted a, a communication hub, you know, going out to all those places. And I think this has accomplished all of that, but on some of the more uh legal side of things, uh, this company is a hundred percent A D A compliant. Um, and everything can be translated into multiple languages, uh, since we're talking about our E L L community coming in. So it's really um taking care of a lot of the concerns that we have with our prior website. It's a great move forward.
Yeah, um, it'll do things like for school board meetings, I think we actually have one.
Um, oh yeah, oh yeah, sure.
Uh, if you go up to the school board one on, we could be on the classroom.
Is it?
Videos on the top right. Let's go back.
I'll go back.
All right. Uh, the top right versus videos. This one's kind of funny actually. Um, the bottom one of the three.
They're gonna make us wash ourselves, are you?
Well, it, what it does is it automatically does.
Transcribe.
Transcribe.
Oh, yes. It's exciting.
All right, we are live everybody.
Obviously, perfect. I think we're gonna have to build a bloopers list or. Swatch ourselves and.
So it's pretty cool, I did nothing to make that happen other than upload the thing.
That's great, yeah.
It, it's really nice having that A D A stuff and it, that we know that we're all compliant and it's fabulous.
Excellent, this is awesome, thank you, thank you, and thank you to the committee that worked on this. We really appreciate it. Any questions or thoughts on that? Does this give you a lot more work?
Actually, the intent of this tool and part of the reason that we picked it was to not do that. Was to make it so that it just becomes part of our regular workflow. Um, so that I don't end up having to do everything, Ian doesn't have to do everything, Kristen doesn't have to do everything. Uh, people just do their job and it just kind of happens. It goes where it's supposed to go. The little work to get there, but you know, once it's in place, that's the idea.
Oh, thank you.
Sydney, can you check and see if John and Susan have joined? Yes. Us on Zoom and if they have, I would like to ask the board if we would be okay with moving the superintendent search agenda item up. Our search consultants are joining us tonight.
Uh, John and Susan are here.
Excellent, okay, so if the board is comfortable with that, I think we'll move the superintendent search agenda item up. Um, so because we have John and Susan joining us, we will um be mindful of their time if they don't want to join us for our whole meeting tonight.
Yeah.
Um, and so.
Should I move them in as?
That would be great, yeah. So John and Susan, we're gonna move you in as panelists into our meeting. And so you all. Show up on our screen in just a moment. And we'll give John and Susan a chance to. Join us here. So we're gonna talk tonight just briefly, uh, check in on the superintendent search. Um, and so John and Susan are our search consultants who are going to work with us and so they're gonna. Join us tonight just to do an overview of how we're kicking off the search and. An overview of their process and then some other information and just a chance to, for us, for the board to meet them and.
Um, Susan is the other. She is not coming in as a panelist. Oh, she's on, but she's not gonna be a panelist.
Okay.
Look, if we have name.
Perfect.
Susan.
Susan Bradley, Susan Bradley, thank you. Yes, sorry about that.
If I hear that name, I'm gonna say.
Yeah, so many Susans. Um, so John, if you are there, you are welcome to, you are up on video for the board to see. And we'll see if. They're available for us to. To join us.
John, can you hear us? Uh, Susan has a hand boost. All right, Susan, you should be able to talk now. But you're muted.
Okay, so. Should, should I have, should I have clicked on join panel?
Uh, you did, so you're here.
Okay. And John's there, okay.
John.
Hi, John.
Well, hello, hello to, uh, to, to you Sydney, it's, it's, uh, good to see you. And uh, see you in this venue, uh, not usual, uh, not the usual for a colleague. And good evening to Brittany and members of the school board and members of the public. Um, as was mentioned, my name is John Freeman and I'm here with colleague Susan Bradley. To, uh, to do, uh, three things tonight, one is to provide you with an introduction to ourselves and our organization. To provide a brief overview of the superintendent search process and to answer any questions that you may have at this time. So by way of introduction, Susan, can I ask you, uh, to introduce yourself and, uh, provide, uh, the board and members of the public with. Uh, a little bit of your background?
Right, uh, good evening, my name is Susan Bradley and thank you for having us here tonight. I'm a senior consultant for the Brian Group and I've been, I've participated in several, uh, searches for superintendent over the last couple of years. Uh, my background is in special education and for the last thirty years, I've been a resident of New Hampshire. I've been a special education teacher in the Pittsfield School District and. A co-project manager of the Nellie May Grant. Uh, uh, with the focus of transforming the middle high school to a student centered learning environment. Uh, currently I'm an out of district coordinator for the Pittsfield School District and also an instructor at the Granite State College. In the advanced endorse endorsement area for learning disabilities as well as um a co-lead faculty. So good, and I'm very excited to get started on this search in Grantham.
Thank you, Susan, and again, my name is John Freeman, I'm a retired superintendent of schools, uh, much of my service has been in New Hampshire. And I've been a, a, a school principal and a superintendent in New Hampshire since, uh, well before the nineties, if any of you can remember that. Um, you may be able to tell by my accent that I'm not a native New Hampshire and I'm originally and did most of my teaching in New Jersey. Our organization, the Brian Group, has been founded and has presided over by Bill Bryan. Bill has, uh, Bill has done uh, more than forty years of research on competencies, organization development and leadership. And over the course of his career, he has consulted with, uh, with a, a number of. Organizations in the private sector, including Fortune five hundred companies, uh, such as Anheuser Busch, Hewlett Packard. And other organizations such as the United States Navy and, uh, the, um, New York Stock Exchange. He has, uh, for, uh, the past twelve to fifteen years been working in the school and public sector. Um, and he is, uh, the designer of the system that I'm about to, uh, to provide you information on. Um, there are five major elements to our search process and the search process, uh, takes about four months, about, uh, sixteen weeks or so. Uh, to complete, can be hurried up and can be dragged on, but that's our, um, dragged on longer, don't mean that in a negative way, can take longer. Um, but, uh, that's our general, uh, approaches to, uh, go through this process in about sixteen weeks. As I said, there are five elements, the first element, phase one is creating a strong search committee foundation. And we spoke, uh, just yesterday with Brittany about, uh, the composition of a search committee, the size of the search committee. And, um, I know that you'll be moving ahead with, uh, school board and community members and the superintendent of schools to develop a search committee. We do recommend a, a diverse community so that major voices in the community are all at the table. And a committee size of about eight to twelve. As we begin to work with the committee and we're, we're assuming we're going to begin to work with the committee on, uh, in mid-January. Um, we will, uh, work to develop a high performing team with clear goals, expectations. Roles and operating norms and so on. We'll also identify community engagement needs, methods of involving the community in this important decision. And also be identifying and initiating a project communication plan. Who and how should we communicate about this process as we move forward? The second, uh, phase is, I, is called identifying superintendent performance criteria. Um, during this phase, we will be conducting with the committee data collection activities with the community. Often those are surveys or focus groups or individual interviews. And we'll provide us a guidance to the committee relative to data collection. We will also establish, and this is a very important, uh, part of the early work. Detailed and measurable superintendent's performance criteria to include the roles, the competencies and the leadership style. That the school district needs in the short and midterm, so we'll be looking in the immediate future with our search committee the fir- first year. And we'll also be looking a little bit longer, the three to five year range, what are the needs? What are the needs that we anticipate for the community right now and moving forward? Our third phrase is sourcing qualified candidates. Uh, we'll work with committee and develop a, a job, uh, posting that includes, uh. Description of the community as well as standards that are expected by the committee as the committee develops the. Criteria for candidates. We then move into phase four, uh, the screening of candidates and we'll work with, uh. School, uh, excuse me, search committee members to, uh, to learn how to screen applicants to look for evidence. Of competencies, uh, roles and leadership style that, um, that the committee has identified as critical. For the next superintendent of Grantham. We'll then conduct, uh, once we have narrowed the field and of candidates, we'll conduct what we call a short interview. These are Zoom interviews with a limited number of candidates, perhaps as many as a half a dozen or so. In which we'll use, uh, a, a, a process called the guided storytelling interview, a process that was. Refined by Bill Bryan, but actually came from, uh, critical incident interviews, uh, developed by the armed forces. Um, in World War Two. It allows us to get at, uh, information and competencies and experiences. Much beyond what a typical interview would would provide. And we'll, we'll provide the committee with, uh, a comparison of the interview types. And, uh, particularly detailed and perform, uh, uh, detailed information and perform a. A mock interview with our guided storytelling technique. Those short interviews are typically about an hour in length. And our goal would be to identify a small number of what we would call a semifinalist, uh, perhaps, uh, you know. Three or four or five semifinalists. We'll then invite a limited number of folks in for what we call a long interview. Again, relying on guided storytelling, uh, to continue to learn more, uh, about each of the individuals. We'll, uh, provide the search committee with scheduling gu- guidance in terms of any visits it may want to take in either direction. Either visiting a current superintendent's school district or and or having the superintendent visit, uh, Grantham. And we'll also provide training, uh, on conducting, uh, reference checks for the committee members. Out of that, we would anticipate one to three finalists that would be be presented from, uh, to the school board. And that would entail phase five, preparing candidate recommendations in which we'll. Uh, review the guidance for integration and analysis of the data collection. Um, the, uh, the school, the search committee then would be expected to attend the presentation of candidate recommendations. And the board with guidance on, uh, conducting, uh, business, uh, beyond that. Um, we find as Susan and I have been conducting, uh, interviews and, uh. Um, superintendent searches utilizing this process for a number of years. We're both experienced. We. Just finished the, uh, one, uh, search on, uh, Sunday night. So, um, that might tell you that our schedules are pretty flexible in terms of what the committee is able to do. And, uh, we look forward to, as Susan said, to working with your community and your committee. Susan, uh. Fill in any gaps for us, please, that I might have missed in in that brief overview.
Uh, John, uh, you didn't miss anything. I'll just, uh, add to what you said. Is that even though the commit- search committee is made up of twelve people, diverse group, um. We want to make sure that the school community knows that the, that those meetings up until when we do the interviews. Are public meetings and people are welcome to come. Also, we'll have, um, this. Search committee will decide on community forums where communities will have the opportunity to come. And ask questions, um, as well as there'll be surveys. Uh, one of, uh, one of the questions I think every district and school community want to know is. Where will the postings go out to? Uh, we partner with the New Hampshire School Board Association. So the job posting will be on that website. It will be, uh, sent to all the school districts in New Hampshire. Uh, NHSBA, um, utilizes, uh, school spring. So the job posting will go automatically to all the school districts. In, uh, besides New Hampshire, in Massachusetts, Maine and Connecticut. Uh, for an additional cost. Um, the committee and district may want to, uh, utilize the American Association School Administrators. As well as Edweek and those and there and through those sites. Uh, the posting would be national. Uh, Grantham has the opportunity to post on. Their Facebook, um, on Indeed, in their website. And if there's a, uh, Edweek and, um. Uh, and Edjobs and if they have, and if you have a, uh, neighborhood or Grantham. Uh, newspaper, uh, certainly through there. Uh, also, just to, um, uh, uh. In addition to what John was saying, the interview process is very different from what. Uh, i- is the usual interview process. We do not sit have, have, uh, people sit around a table. And ask pet questions, uh. We really dig into those roles and competencies and, uh, and and the candidate has the opportunity. To, uh, provide evidence that they do have those roles and competencies that. Uh, a granted superintendent would need to have in order to function at a high level.
Thank you, Susan. Um, wonder if the, uh, board members have questions or, uh, Sydney or members of the public have questions? We'd be happy to entertain them.
That was very thorough. We have a, a variety of people here. We have some admin team members here, teachers and. A parent. I don't know if anybody would like to ask any questions since it's open.
I don't know if this is a question for them or for you, Brittany. When are we going to develop the ten, twelve person committee?
So we'll start between now and our January meeting. We'll start, we'll put a call out for people. And start soliciting interest in it. And then my thought is that at the January meeting, the board would have that group to look at. To to select the committee and then early to mid-January would be the first meeting of that committee.
I wi- I will add that, um, the, the superintendent search committee will, uh. Require a significant commit, uh, commitment. Some of our, uh, meetings, especially when we're developing roles and competencies. Will be about three hours in length. As I mentioned, our short interviews, about an hour in length and, um. At least a half hour to process, uh, for most candidates. And then our long interviews, our finalist candidates. Our semifinalist candidates will be a couple of hours each. And again, time to to process and rate. We have a formal rating system. So that this, uh, this process is designed to be as objective as possible and. Take out of the equation, um, you know, sort of, oh, I. I liked how he sounded or I liked how she presented this. Um, we, we really look and to make this, uh, process. Uh, as objective as we possibly can.
Would these meetings be, um, via Zoom or in person?
Well, we've done both. Uh, Susan and I are planning to be, uh, in person in your community to do these. Uh, my preference, um, is to do the, uh, do as much in person as we can, although there. We're open to doing, uh, Zoom meetings as well. And, uh, one search I was, uh, involved in, um, there was a combin- a couple of searches, actually. There was a combination and seems as so, i- it may be similar to your board meetings. In which people, uh, are invited to come and participate, uh, in person, face to face. But the, uh, Zoom option or a remote option is offered. Okay.
A piece that I had a chance to to speak, um, with. Uh, these great folks yesterday about that the board had talked about at our last meeting was looking at the job description. And John mentioned it briefly, but their recommendation is for us to. Hold off on finalizing any kind of job description until that search committee is formed. And they're able to go through that process, that initial process of the performance criteria and some of those things, because that will. Influence, you know, the job description moving forward, um, which I thought was a great recommendation and, you know. Gives us some time to still go through that older job description that we have and start to update. Some things that we would like to update on it and then have that, also have that search committee able to join that conversation.
John, when you, when you talked about trying to be as objective as possible and. Not wanting how the person presented or how they spoke or have that influenced you. I guess I'm getting tripped up a little on that because I, I view that as an important. Piece of the overall job is their communication style, how they present things, those type of things. I'm assuming there, there's some kind of criteria for that. We're just not gonna completely. Skip over that, please.
Well, we're, we're going to find out what's important to your community. So for example, I, I don't disagree almost every community. In fact. In my experience, every community says communication is, uh, an essential skill for the superintendent. And so what we will do is take someone through a process through, uh, their telling of their stories. And us, uh, probing to understand, uh, their stories, uh. It will give us information a- about how effective or ineffective they may be as communicators. Uh, when we select, when the committee selects the competencies such as communication. Um, or, uh, courage or politically savvy or a- any of those, uh, sorts of skills. And competencies. We also include behavioral descriptors, so we're able to to get an idea. I didn't mean to, uh, to mislead you by saying that, uh, you know, the person, uh, can be, uh, uh, fumbling, uh. Uh, washed up, uh, old, uh, superintendent of schools, not that I know any of those. Um, but, uh, but rather, uh, the committee will identify the critical areas, what's most important for you. And I would be surprised if communication didn't come up as one. Um, in addition, when we look at roles of the superintendent, it seems as though one of them, uh, the roles, again, it's typically, uh. O- often, if not every time selected, is the role of a communicator. And so we'll probe. Uh, uh, the individual's background to find out what sort of communication style or methods. Or strategies he or she might have used in the past. What we know, uh, from human beings is that the best predictor of future behavior is past behavior. We know that competencies travel, then so if somebody. Might be telling a story of their undergraduate college experience in which they've exerted leadership. Um, we're interested in probing that as much as what they've done recently. And so we will get at, uh, those sorts of issues that I think you're speaking about, sir. And, um, and clearly communicator and communication is, uh, al- always, if not almost always, at the top of the list for school districts.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And I would just like to add that in both the short interviews and long interviews, the search committee will have an opportunity. Uh, to ask the candidate specific questions as well.
S- s- so the process is that Susan or I will conduct the interviews. Um, the primary, uh, interview is the guided storytelling, uh, segments. And then members of the committee or, uh, members of the community will have a chance to ask questions at various points in the process as well.
From a parent perspective, just two thoughts. Would be really helpful to have more concrete information on the time expectations. So I heard very significant time and then I heard some three-hour meetings and two-hour interviews. It would be great to maybe lay that out on like a high-level monthly schedule. So as parents are thinking or others are thinking about participating. You know, is it gonna bump up into May and then I have baseball and oh, now I really can't do this anymore. So really planning out what that's gonna look like. The other piece is from a meeting administrative perspective, research shows that collaborative meetings held in a hybrid environment. Meeting Zoom and in person are the least effective. So the group might want to determine. Meetings that are preferred to be in person or meetings that are meant to be, uh, are are better in a Zoom environment, but. I do a lot of virtual meetings through work and there's very clear. Research that shows that you just don't get collaboration in a hybrid meeting. The people who are virtual just don't participate. So something to consider as you're doing your meeting planning. I think you risk. Alienating the people who are trying to be an active participant without realizing that joining by Zoom is not gonna afford them the same voice in the conversation.
Thank you. Uh, we did provide Brittany with a, a, a timeline and we anticipate, uh, getting started. As Brittany mentioned, um, early to mid-January. And we expect to be concluding with the appointment by the school board, um, in early April. Uh, relative to, uh, your second point, um, I couldn't agree more with, uh, your findings. It has been a challenge, uh, in, in the past, in my experience, to work with a Zoom participant. Because much of the meetings are conducted in as small groups. Some of the, some of the meetings are conducted as large groups. So we've stretched out, um, we've stretched out, uh, the calendar. That, uh, that Brittany will be able to share with you. Um, it's, it's imposs- it, it, it's impossible to, to tie down the exact number of hours as we get into the interviews. Because we don't know how many people we will be interviewing in each of those phases. But we're fairly solid in the early phases of our work and we do have a few three-hour meetings. We've scheduled meetings, uh, tentatively once a week, uh, but sometimes the committee decides that. They don't meet, need to meet, for example, um, in, in a search I've conducted, uh. Uh, it was not necessary to, to meet that frequently while application materials are coming in, for example. And, and, uh, and while, for example, the community, uh, community surveys might be coming in. So there's some flexibility at that. Uh, typically, the meetings are no more than, than three hours and many of the meetings will be, uh, less than three hours. But we can go through that level of detail, um, uh, if you'd like.
No.
All good.
Okay, we, and, and again, we could do that on a non-budget discussion night.
Did you enjoy our budget discussion, Matt?
Enjoy, uh, uh, you know, that's not one word that comes to mind. It, it perhaps is a flashback to some of my own experiences, Sydney.
Any other questions folks have tonight?
Feels really real now.
Yep. Okay. Thank you both so much for joining us tonight. We really appreciate your time and your willingness to, to join us here and, um. I think we're all excited to get this kicked off and moving forward. And so we'll definitely, um, I will be in touch as we move forward.
Great. Thank you so much. It was nice seeing you. It was, um, nice to get to know at the school board and, uh, your topics. Then, uh, uh, so thank you for having us.
Thank you very much.
All right, we will not make you stay on our screen, so.
We appreciate your kindness.
We have, we have a policy that when people are in the room, if they have to sneak out, we don't judge them. Because we know that we're the only ones that have to be here. So we'll let you off our screen so that when you sneak out, we won't even know.
Okay, thank you very much, Brittany. Good night, everyone.
Okay, so before we move off of the superintendent search, just, um, we should. Then, you know, the next step for us is to put that call out for, um, committee members. Um, initially, if we're thinking, you know, in my conversation, um, with John and Susan yesterday, you know, thinking about that, like eight to twelve people. Number, um, looking at having community members, staff, administration, school board. Um, their recommendation is that we have someone who is able to bring, uh, the perspective either as a union rep. Or you're someone from the collective bargaining agreement that would be one of the members. And then they also mentioned a lot of, they are open to and encourage, um, having older students. If there's an older student that would be interested, which is a little different here because it's, you know, would be a potentially a former GVS student. Um, but that's also an option. So, um, if, I don't know, you know, folks have thoughts on those. I think, you know, definitely community staff, administrator, school board, um, those are for sure. I would say we'll have, you know, one to three people of each of those. Um, thoughts on the older student, having a, opening it up to a, either a middle or high school student? Do folks have any thoughts on that?
I think we have to be conscious of the meeting schedule.
The time commitment, yeah.
Sports, school, homework, sleep.
Yep. Um, one of the things that they mentioned that I thought was a really good suggestion was to make sure that. Um, one of the things that they mentioned that I thought was a really good suggestion was to make sure that. A call for involvement in the search committee also mentions that there'll be opportunities. For involvement if folks are not able to make that sort of time commitment. Just to say that there'll be surveys, forums, other ways that feedback will be solicited. Um to make sure that that's, that folks don't feel like being on the committee is the only way to be involved.
As for the committee itself, um. I do not. Exactly how to say this, but you're gonna need somebody who's very available for the bulk of these meetings. Um if somebody can make one or two meetings, that isn't going to. Be adequate for the community. So I guess in appealing to potential members, you might wanna be specific about. Time commitment.
Yeah, yeah. And we have the timeline that they sent um to me as, you know, something that we can share with the, with people who are interested. Any other thoughts on that? Are folks in favor of it being just sort of an open call that we put out through, you know, email newsletters to say, you know, please? And and what, what would we like as the um to get in return, you know, to get back from folks to help us make that decision? You know, if we, if we have a fair number of people that are. Able to give that time commitment, is there a, do we just want like a, just a, I'm interested in joining the search committee or are we looking for like? Write us a paragraph about your interest in your availability. Are there things that would, you know, that we wanna? Use to help if we did need to narrow down, if we had more interests than we were able to put onto the committee?
I think that would be important if there were a lot of people um interested.
Could go either way.
It could.
Yeah, but I'm, I'm not sure we have the time to see if a lot of people are interested if they're talking long to January. At this point, I think. You know, we have to decide now, is it gonna go out with a criteria? I think it's still not our open, because.
Yeah.
By the time we have to make that decision, we'll be in mid-January.
Yeah, between now and then is when we're gonna, you know, put a, put the, you know, requests out and say, you know, but. Do we want it to just be a reply and say you're interested or would we like, you know, a. Three sentences about why you're interested in your, in your general availability, something like that. What do folks think about that?
And I think that's just asking Chris, um honesty, why would you like to serve on the committee? What is important to you?
Yeah, maybe up to a paragraph written statement.
Yeah.
Doesn't need to be long.
Statement of interest.
Okay.
And you did say you would kind of outline the time commitment.
Yeah, my thought, the the document that they shared is just a very uh brief, um let me see, I can show you on here. It's just a um. It's kind of just a grid um that walks through, you know, what the topics would be of each of those meetings and sort of the overlap of like. Because as you know, Susan mentioned, I think there there's, there is some overlap of. You know, some of the topics will be, more than one of these things will be happening at the same time. So it's just sort of like a grid of ti- you know, the time commitment. So the, you know, it'll convene for a maximum of twelve meetings, most running ninety to hundred and eighty minutes long. December to April, and then it's just how is that breaking down over those, each of those? You know, and seeing, you know, you can kind of see where there's gonna be more. So you know, end of January, early February, there's gonna be a couple of meetings in a row where there's three or four things to get done. So that's gonna be, you know, a couple of busy weeks. Um you know, it sort of in mid-March, there's gonna be another couple, you know, more. That's the timeline that would be around the like long interviews. So there's gonna be another kind of bigger chunk of time there. So folks, and and that's something we can share out. Yeah, yeah. Okay. I don't think we need to decide specifically. I would say we don't need to like say we're gonna do two of this category, one of like, let's see what comes in.
Yeah.
And we can sort it through it in January and then that'll give us enough time to make that decision at the January board meeting. Have that committee formed and then the uh anticipating the first meeting would be the, either that first or second week of January. Does that make sense to everybody? Okay.
Forgive me if I um just refresh, is it eighty percent FTE? Is it? What are we putting out as the position? Is it?
Currently, yes.
Okay.
Yep. Yep. All right, any other thoughts on that? Okay, all right, we'll start soliciting community involvement and letting people know kind of what our next steps are, where we're heading next in the process. Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so we'll head back to uh we are on playground RFP bit.
Hey Brittany?
Yes.
Do we wanna?
Yeah.
Move around any of these based on the people that are here? I'm just thinking, I mean, we've, we've gone through four items in almost two hours. You know, some of these, I'm assuming Christie's here for the policies. We got other four things to get through. It's eight thirty already. I'm just wondering if we can't. Shit some things around a little bit.
I didn't pay him off.
I was gonna say, the only, the only people that I knew in advance were here for certain things were Randy and John and Susan. So if there are, I'm. I'm happy to move things around if.
Okay, don't mind.
At need, as need be.
I know Christie was just involved in the, in the dress code thing, so I.
Yeah.
Maybe, I believe she was here for that, so.
You are correct.
Yeah, yeah, I think if, if um would folks be comfortable moving our policy? I mean, you usually do policies at the end. Let's move.
Go for it.
Change, we're just gonna make it all new tonight.
Okay, I have to backtrack on something.
Yes.
Do that first.
Okay.
Dress code?
Um yeah, so let's do, let's start our policy um. So we're, the first policy that we're looking at tonight is JICA, which is dress code. This is a new policy and this is the only policy that we have for first reading. And so this is one that we have not looked at yet as a board. Everything and all of our other policies tonight were second reading. So this is a first reading and the board has it in our packet. Um and. And Sydney or Kristen, did you want to give us? Kristen um and other committee members are here, so I will let them take it. Perfect.
Yeah, if I can just start by saying that um. I think this whole ball got stopped, started with a um current sixth grader, last year fifth grader wrote a persuasive essay. As to why Grantham Village School needed to look at our dress code. And I totally admire that and I think that's what was the catalyst to get us together and start meeting and she as well as two other students were on the committee. So I'll let you guys skip it over.
And so I led the committee um. With the parents and other staff members, students, uh three sixth grade students were invited. Um also to join us in meetings. Um physically, we only had one student come to one meeting, but um you know, I talked to them and. In the building throughout, you know, the time that we were kind of working heavily on this um to get just input. So um. You know, we had a purpose that um our first priority is for safety and social and emotional health of our staff and students. And um the. Uh dress code is intended to provide guidelines for dress that promote safe and respectful environment for all. Um so uh our first steps, we, we had a total of five meetings, so it went fairly smoothly, actually. I think uh it was a great committee. We worked very well together. Um our first steps were to look at other dress code policies um from other elementary schools around. And um and then our step really was to look at our own policy, our current policy. To decide um what we wanted to keep, what we wanted to take out, what we wanted to revise. Um and ended up really doing almost a complete overhaul. And you know, we just, we were very mindful of our language. We um went back to the drawing board many, many times. And um I think we did finally land on something that we thought was um. Thoughtful and um inclusive and um. Uh worked for the purpose, you know, we, we took out a lot from the old policy that we thought was more antiquated and. And um, you know, our, our language does allow for um. Teachers to have some sort of um say in their own classrooms. But uh for the most part, we wanted to give students the opportunity to express themselves. Uh that was a big topic in the sixth grade students persuaded essay. Um and but also be respectful and uh. Of of everybody in the building. So.
I'll add that some of the challenges were identifying a policy and components of a policy that would fit for our pre-K through our sixth graders. There's, you know, there's a lot of, lot happening between those grades and. Um you know, so for example, you'll see in some other organizations' policies that the length of. The bottoms need to be three to four inches, three to four inches on a sixth grader is very different than three to four inches on a pre-K student. Um and so we tried to really focus on functionality, what works on the playground, what works in PE, what is um. What works for the typical activities of your elementary school population and not get caught up on. You know, something needs to be three inches long or three fingers in width or, you know, we had two adults stand side by side. With how long something is from your fingertips and. One person could have worn a pair of shorts that was two inches from the uh start of a thigh and another person, it would have been like seven inches from the start of the thigh. It's just. Like there's so much variety in body shape and size that we tried to really. Not have absolutes like that, but really focus on what would work for the entire student population. We also took out anything that was gender specific, nothing about skirts. There's nothing about, well, you know, we talked about undergarments and. Things like that. So we tried to be thoughtful about being gender neutral. Anything else I missed on what we focused on?
I think the hardest part was the language and working with that. So that was our biggest sort of. Non-room throughout the whole thing. We all worked very well together and we all had a lot of the same ideas about what really was important.
As I was trying, oh sorry, I was gonna say, as we were trying to figure out the language for like the length of the shorts, I did warn Randy that he might like not want to check my search engine. Cause I was trying to figure.
Now just to that, I, I think this was great.
Yeah.
Yeah, I I was very impressed with um. This, this is for all children, not just for these children, these children and. I also looked at, I'm sure it took forever to get to this point, but I look at it in thinking as a parent, this is not cumbersome reading.
Yes.
Um it's very um friendly to uh to process and I think it gives you. Um an ability to say if something doesn't look right, you know, let's speak to the child individually with whoever's. Um concerned about the choice of clothing, but. Um I think of the, you know, the kids who want to choose to express where they are and we're not. Um judging, we're talking about coverage and appropriate clothing without the gender label and like. I'm very appreciative, so thank you.
Yeah.
And and I'll admit that what was in place was antiquated. And it's a really big challenge to take on an old policy and rewrite it. So I'm, I'm very grateful.
Yeah, I agree. I think something that was difficult and in a committee could have wound up being like six pages long. And I really appreciate that it was like, it's very digestible and it's not full of like. Uh there's no like flow chart of if thens that you have to follow, which I think wind up in a lot of like, yeah, if your legs are this long, then you. Um and I I just appreciate the like simplicity of it and um and I think it really. It like focuses on the, that like school is learning, but we also acknowledge that. People are gonna express themselves through their clothing. Yeah. Yeah, thank you very, very much.
Can you take all the rest of the policies?
Any uh um any questions about it or any other? Okay. Excellent. So we need a motion for the first reading for policy JICA. I have a motion from Leslie and a second from Ed. So all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. All right, excellent. Yes, anyone who is here for the primary purpose of dress code, please feel free to sneak out.
After your extreme payment.
All right, so we are um looking, sticking with policies. We're on our second reading. For, let's do um. Do, do, do. Okay, so we're doing um JICL, JJJ, JJJ dash R. JLF, JLDBA and JLCF. So it's the School District Internet Access and Students Through Wellness. And this is a second reading on these. Does anyone have any?
I do, just as a, just as a noted update, because we talk a lot about um the. Uh homeschool changes and so I did meet with the School Board Association last time. And I had to take out my twenty-five student limit because they said even that wouldn't fly.
Woo.
So basically, um the only exception. That for this rule would be as if a student is homeschooled but getting an EFA voucher. That's the only way, way that we can limit anything. If somebody is being homeschooled, they can come here pretty much full time and do whatever they want and. Not have to follow any of our regular. Yeah.
Okay.
So I was like, well, I just put that in because our classes are gonna get too big. And of course, they came back. With the logical answer, which is if you had families moving in.
Right.
And you went to twenty-seven students, would you tell them they couldn't go in? Well, no, of course we couldn't, so you can't do that. I tried. Very interesting law.
Yep. Good word. And the um. The wellness committee. That he was able to.
Right, so basically the board instructs the superintendent to principal and principal to have that committee.
Yep.
If it's a board committee, then you're, you know, in the position of having. A lot of other requirements. So basically, the board wants to direct the superintendent and principal to run the wellness committee.
Perfect. Yeah, that was much. Any other questions or? Thoughts on this batch of policies? Okay, so we need a motion to approve the second reading of policies, JICL, JJJ, JJJ dash R. JLF, JLDBA and JLCF. Someone. I have a motion from Leslie and a second from Ed. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, let's go to our group four that were rescinding. So that's three. It's JBAA, JBAA dash R, JICC, JICC dash R and JHB. Any? Concerns or thoughts that have come up? They were all policies that are covered in other areas or have been rolled into other. Or moved to other policies. Okay, so we need a motion to rescind. JBAA, JBAA dash R, JICC, JICC dash R and JHB. I have a motion from Leslie and a second from Ed. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. And any opposed, say nay. All right, so we'll go to our next agenda item because it kind of flows in, it's in this pack of. Policies and that's the, looking at transgender policy or procedure, a discussion around that.
My recommendation is going to be what it was last time. Is that I'm gonna recommend that you don't have a policy, that you have a good party procedure. And that you kind of watch how these cases go and that if you ever do need a policy, maybe something goes in place, in its place, but you have. A very good, strong nondiscrimination policy and everything should be covered under there. And I think we would probably all hope for the day where we don't even need a procedure, but right now I do think we need at least that.
I agree.
I agree with that too.
Any other thoughts or discussion on that? Thank you. Okay, so we'll move forward.
Work on one.
Policy and take it off of. Or take it, we'll move forward with procedure and take it off of our policy list. Okay, so now we're gonna go back in time to Playground RFP bit.
Can I get back to two things before we go?
Absolutely, we're. It is anybody's game tonight.
Meredith emailed me that I have an older version of the budget. And that the budget you're looking at does have the CIA director costs in it.
Oh, okay.
That was my, I'm looking at one where it wasn't in it, but she put it in the one that you have. Because she's quicker than I am. Okay. And then.
It's a blurry looking.
It's the blurry. Why is? Why is it? But that it is in there, so the the deposition's in there, so that might make you feel a little bit better. Um, and then you also wanna remember that you would be getting about uh eighty thousand dollars in revenue for that too.
So you've got the full cost.
Full cost is in because we would own the position.
That what's in there does not reflect the revenue.
Right, right.
That's the full cost of the position, but.
But we get eighty thousand.
Interesting, okay.
So we can't put it in that function, so what we would have to do is present it to the public with that knowledge, but it would have to go into a different budget line. That was one thing I wanted to jump back to, the other thing that I just wanted to jump back to to clarify is that you had just said that. The superintendent position is eighty percent, but at the last meeting you voted in sixty percent. Yep, so I just wanna clarify that before Brenda does minutes and something goes out.
Yes, thank you.
Is it sixty still?
Okay, yes. Yes, thank you.
Sorry, I but just before we move too hard forward, I wanted to do those things.
Thank you, thank you for clarifying that. I have been going. I have been eyeball deep in the job description. So in my mind, it's like four hundred and twenty percent because there's a lot of words. Okay, all right, so now I think we're going back.
Let's go to something exciting.
Okay, we're going back to Playground R F P bit.
Okay, I messed up my packet.
Yeah, we're going back in time, it is Playground R F P bit is right, was was right after our uh budget stuff. Before the safety plan.
Okay, so um there's. Good and bad, right? So if we wanna just cut to the chase, we did only receive one bid, we had four site visits and only one actually came to a bid. That's always not great when you only have one bid come in. On the other hand, it is a good bid, in the sense that it is a good viable bid. It's a local company, they don't subcontract out their work and they have excellent references from. The town of Grantham, from Eastman, um from a lot of local people, so. I would feel comfortable with the board moving forward in this direction, however, I need to give you an overall update. You've probably read in the newspaper with Lab and with other places that the cost of projects are increasing everywhere. The same thing has happened to us, but um I believe we have figured out a solution. So. Uh, here's our quick update before you decide on the bid, is that. We've got our bid and we've got our original budget for this project, given the bid, the project will come in over budget. And we've been going over the variables that can be changed, one, we can request and or fundraise more money. Um, there is not a lot of favor for that from any of the discussions that we've had. Uh, the Playground Committee, we we have sort of an emergency Playground Committee meeting last week. The feeling for most people is that uh we wanna respect the community's contribution to this project and. There's a budget and we were gonna find a way to stick to it, we don't wanna go out for more money. Uh, another option is waiting until summer twenty-four and you can try again, there's. Could costs be lower, I don't know, could more people be available, we don't know. That is a possibility though, so I wanna present you with all the options. We could also phase out the project, uh which we've gone round and round about. The one thing that I'm really not in favor of in terms of phasing out the project is that the the main reason for doing this project is drainage. Drainage is something you really wanna try and do all at once if you can, uh because you really wanna get it right, so we could. Try to take different pieces of the project out, but that's not the best option. And the fourth option is that we change out some of the play equipment. So we did discuss with the Playground Committee and the admin team, the recommendation is to swap out the expensive timber tower. Which was sort of our showpiece. Kind of a gourmet piece of a of playground equipment for a less expensive but comparable piece of equipment. So on the left is what we had budgeted, which is the timber tower and the the essential. Function of the timber tower was the climbing, so we need, you know, we looked at all the elements of the playground, certain things have climbing, you know, certain things had. Stability, balance, you know, all of those other kind of things, the main purpose of the timber tower was climbing and for that older age group. Um, the timber tower all in with the equipment and installation was gonna almost hit the two hundred thousand dollar mark. So it would pretty much, that in itself with the five hundred and forty-five thousand dollar bid is gonna put us over. If you look on the right, um Kristen and I met with the Companum Playground Company. This is a very similar piece of climbing equipment, it's called the jungle climber, it serves all of the same. Kind of mobility requirements in terms of climbing, it's also age five to twelve, so it hits the same age group. Um, and we can have this piece of equipment in that same exact spot for the playground for a hundred thousand dollars less. If we swap it to this piece of equipment, we can be within budget and accept this bid and do the project this summer. In addition, um here are the advantages, is that we feel we would be honoring the community contribution by staying within the budget. Uh, the new piece still meets all of the original goals of the playground, so we set some original goals with this project, we're not changing any of these. Any of those goals by going with this piece of equipment. It allows the project to continue this summer, which you will hear from some of the kids is very important. And it also allows us to purchase some of the other pieces of equipment we had put on hold for a later date, so we pulled. Four or five pieces, smaller pieces of equipment when we were cutting the budget down to. Get it to pass last year, um if we swap this out, those are pieces of equipment we can actually add back in. Um, the Playground Committee is in favor of this, admin team is in favor of this. So our recommendation would be that we swap to the jungle climber and accept this bid and be able to move forward with this project this summer.
Let's go.
How much were we over with the tower?
About a hundred thousand dollars. I mean, it's still gonna be tight.
How does that allow us to buy the other equipment?
Cause they're smaller. Because um when we swap to the jungle climber, I can negotiate with Compan to give us a fifteen to twenty-five percent discount by buying all of our equipment from that.
I I just feel like if postponing this, everything is gonna keep getting more expensive. Costs aren't coming down, we don't know if anybody's gonna be available, we know but the the availability of this group of age ready to go.
They have committed in good faith that they will be ready to go June fifteenth through September first. Um, and we've told them, you know, September thirtieth is our wiggle room, you know, that it could potentially go, but they're they're ready to rock and roll. I spoke to them um on the phone just to go over some like the fact that we might already have a change, how do they wanna handle change orders? Those kind of things and I think Toby and I both. Have talked to them because they came for the site visit, we both think they'll be really good to work with.
Yeah.
We have built in contingency then.
Yeah, we've eaten most of those up already, just to let you know. It's gonna be close.
So I assume we're purchasing the. Additional equipment last.
We are giving a good deal on equipment, um what we're trying to do is we're trying to see how much we can stay. And not have S E group do as much as we thought they would have to do during the construction phase. Pull that back a little.
And this is the, what you're talking about is just that like lump sum base bid, not including the. Parking lot or the.
So we need to do that and then the, we need to talk about the main bid first and then the next page on the slide are the two adults.
Perfect.
Randy said he uh ran the jungle climber past his children.
Yeah, I held the picture of it up to Olivia and she went.
Yeah.
Wow, she says, that's not fair.
I think it looks like a nest, that's why I like.
A box nest.
Yeah.
Older kids are gonna. Um, other thoughts on that? Base, the base bid and the the recommendation. Okay, so we would need a motion to um. Accept the. The uh Playground R F P bid.
And RJ Stevens.
From RJ Stevens. Do we need to change the? Wait, let me start over. In our motion, do we, do we need to formally change? To that, from the timber tower to the, we can just know that that's, okay, so all we need to do, so we need a motion. To um accept the Playground Bid from K A Stevens. So a motion from Leslie and a second from Denise, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed, say nay. Okay, so that moves forward.
Ed, I also wanted to tell you one place else where we might try and build and build up some contingency buffer. Toby and I were talking today, their concrete cost is five times the asphalt, so we might try and change some of the walkways or maybe all the walkways to asphalt instead of. Concrete and that could give us our contingency too.
And that doesn't change anything with compliance or.
Okay, so looking at the court and parking.
Yeah, so these are the two adults that came in, which not surprisingly came in more, much more expensive than we thought. So unfortunately, I did find out on December first that we didn't receive the sizable grant for the court that we put in for. So the full proposal for this adult is one hundred ten thousand seven hundred forty-nine. And then the proposal for the parking lot repair, those two kind of things kind of go together, as you remember. They don't absolutely have to go together, but it's better to do them together, is one hundred seventeen thousand eight hundred and sixty-two. The only other funding source for the parking lot repair at this point is, I just wanted to let you know, you have eighty-four thousand dollars in the maintenance and repair trust. But that depletes that trust. If you have an emergency, so you really don't wanna deplete that, you might wanna think about using something if you decide to move forward that with that. Um, if the board wants to move forward with either of these, you'd have to be, um you'd have to add it in the budget or do separate warrant articles or. Simply wait for another year to do these two sections and make it kind of phase three.
Getting a cycle broken record here, but do we have to make this decision tonight?
You do not have to make this decision tonight, the the only. Uh, this is another February one and you would only have to decide on these in February if you wanted it in the budget or on the warrant article. So um. The only thing that I. It's amazing the the things that become concerns, if we don't do the court. And the rest of the playground project moves forward, we have to find a place for the Gaga Pet. Because we cannot not have a place for the Gaga Pet.
They haven't gotten used to being fenced off.
Hmm, they want it. So those are the, those are the considerations.
Do a PR campaign for no more Gaga.
Is it too brutal?
But they also have to learn how to navigate that, so it's important.
It's a learning tool. Okay. Ed, I am gonna jot down every time we say, do we have to decide that tonight so that we remember why our meeting in February is. We can look back and say.
Why it's five hours long?
Yeah, that's why we've all just moved in in February, that's how the February meeting always goes, that's, it is what it is. Um, okay, so we will hold these as considerations for budget. Looking, um and I think we should also, as we head into making making those February decisions. Think about that this would either be budget or warrant, and what does that look like, what do we look like in terms of like? You know, a- and what's the um, you know, looking ahead next year, the year after, are there other other things that are on the horizon? That we would either be, you know, bumping up against or putting together. Um, potentially, so just keep that in mind as we look, you know, next month at the next budget items and then in February when we make these decisions.
And could we do the parking lot without doing the playboard? I thought the playboard is sending stuff to the parking lot.
Toby to speak to that because he and I kind of, like, the idea was to move the court over a few feet. You know, so that, so that we might be able to, but if you could explain that better.
Yeah, cause the parking lot. Is kind of. Inclined to have a, it almost has a bed in it. So that pitch is a problem, but then you have to run off from the core, that's the other problem, so you kind of got two problems. So.
It would, it would sound to me like we, the court would be the, if we had to choose between one of the two. The court would be the one to do because that's essentially causing issues.
Yeah, that's, that's probably our biggest problem is that runoff, because that's, that's where the ice is every morning or every day. So the standing water. That we can handle a little better, because we can see in that would be good, but that run, that runoff is a. That's an hour thing where.
Okay, this is exciting.
It is, like, this is gonna happen.
It's also really exciting to watch the pavilion. Happen, be there and get a roof. Okay, any other playground things before we? If you are in communication with the Playground Committee, thank you from the board for emergency looking at this and making some hard calls there. All right, so our next agenda item is the um Grantham School District Safety Plan.
I'm actually gonna ask Brenda and Kristen to go through this because they took the bulk, they took on the bulk of this work and I'm very thankful that they did.
Brenda's not feeling very safe.
So this is what we did, we um and Toby had a piece of this too when reviewing it all, because a big piece of this is. Hazardous waste, all those things, what to do, you know, when an event happens. And what protocols do we have, what policies do we have? So what we did is we looked at what the state had for guidelines of what we should. And our, unfortunately, our safety poly, policy had not been planned, had not been updated since two thousand seventeen. So it was time and Sydney charged us with that task, so we did it. Um, our plan is.
I don't often do that, but I did.
Very complete. I also looked at other school districts to make sure that, you know, we were in line with what. Is going on with the the rest of the world in New Hampshire, um also the Department of Labor. Taking all their guidelines and putting it all together. Uh, unfortunately, it caused some work for Toby.
And future work.
Yes, so, but it's pretty comprehensive.
Yeah, there you go.
You know, Kristen and Toby were very helpful in reviewing it all and. Kristen and I met a few times to go over everything and this is what you have. So I just wanna give a kudos to Brenda, because we did meet a few times, all of us, but Brenda really took off with it and just. Thank you.
Thank you indeed.
So this is our plan.
Any? Questions or?
Just kudos, yes.
Huge. It's a huge undertaking.
I'm sorry, they need to.
Yes, we're going to. She's like, yeah, yeah, you're welcome.
You see what my days are like? Not checked off the list until it's done.
Does anyone have any questions? No, okay. We need a motion to approve the Grantham School District Safety Plan.
So moved.
We have a motion from Leslie and a second from Denise, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Your safety plan is approved. You're welcome. All right, now we get to talk about the safe grant, which is different.
You lose some, but you do win some, so we didn't get the court grant, but I'm very happy to say that we did get the safe grant.
That's huge.
For twenty thousand eight hundred dollars to reconfigure our lobby to have um safer access control. For our visitors coming into the school, it's something that we've been cited twice um by Homeland Security for, so now we. For our visitors coming into the school, it's something that we've been cited twice um by Homeland Security for, so now we can take care of it. By some miracle, Toby has a, managed to get Grant State Class in here to look at it on December nineteenth. I mean, the state just granted ten million dollars that all had to do with access control, so then the fact that we have somebody coming in, I just really think is a miracle, so. Thank you for that. Um, so what I need you to do, unless you do have questions, is to formally accept the safe grant of twenty thousand eight hundred dollars.
Right, so we need a motion to accept the safe grant of twenty thousand eight hundred dollars. We have a motion from Nancy and a second from Denise. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, say nay. All right, excellent. Okay, so I think if I've been keeping track, we have gotten through, oh no, we have progress monitoring. Um, so Progress Monitoring Committee um wanted to just touch base on sort of that committee moving forward. The reason I'm bringing this to the board now is that the Progress Monitoring Committee has been operating under a um, we send a, Sydney sends a quick survey out. Once a month and if, to see if folks feel that we need to meet or not. We've had a couple that we did not need to meet, this last month, the committee had enough people that said, yes, please, let's have a meeting that we did meet. The majority of what was wanting to be discussed was not COVID related. So the things that people wanted to talk about were things like the increase in illness, how our absence is looking. What is this RSV that is wreaking havoc on our lives? How many, you know, that kind of stuff, which was a very positive discussion, but was out, sort of. Started to be outside of the charge of what that uh committee was initially set up for. So initially, it was to look at how are things progressing with COVID. The majority of the conversation at this meeting was not about COVID, there was some feeling from the committee that it was really. A benefit and a positive experience for folks on the committee to have that group. To sort of touch base with and to talk about some like concerns and get, you know, solicit input from um. You know, from. Other like constituent groups and, you know, having representatives of parents, of paras, of staff. Um, medical professionals that are here in our community, it was really nice. Um, my feeling on it is. If the board sees this as still a committee that we would look to for guidance or input around issues of COVID. Then we should leave things as they are, so if we are thinking that there is a, you know, potential that we will revisit and ask. This has been a committee that we have looked to to say, wh- what, what is the feedback from the committee on that? What are we hearing from people? If we think that that's an important thing to still have in place, then I think we leave things as is. If we feel that um, that's no longer a need that the board has, I think everyone on the committee would be. Really comfortable getting that time in their very, very busy schedules back. Um, and would be grateful to have been a part of it, um, and the board would be grateful for, for their work on that committee, if that's something that we feel. And I think the third sort of leg of that is. If the board feels that it's important to have a group who is able to come together and talk about some of these. Issues, you know, whether it's health-related things, things like that, then that would be. A s- an, a separate committee for the board to decide that we would need and to. Seek people to join and to us, you know, establish that group. Um, what I would like to, I will tell you the two things I would like to avoid, one, I would like to. Not have a committee that was initially charged with COVID, having meetings where we're not talking about that, I don't think that that's, that was the initial. Goal of that group, um, I would also like us to make sure that. The, a group that we do have has a targeted focus to talk about. Um, and that it isn't just, you know, because we do have methods and ways for folks to communicate with the board. Um, and we had this very specific need at the time that I think the, this committee has been really great about, about providing us input into. Um, but I did let the committee know that I was gonna bring this forward to the board since this last meeting kind of brought that into light. Any thoughts on that?
Well, that, that is helpful information, if COVID is not being discussed. During the meeting meetings, I, it would seem that. There are other ways to communicate concerns rather than to. Take up. This committee that is no longer serving its purpose.
I don't think we want. Maybe we originally had. Specifically to sort of spawn off to something else that. You know. Not saying it doesn't have a, a direct charge or anything, but it, it's sort of. I think I'd be in favor of. Just banning the committee and if we have a future need. You know, reorganizing the committee.
Yeah, it's one of those things that I feel like I, I have to tiptoe up to saying. There was something not on our agenda this month, you know, we didn't, there, there's a topic that's been on our agendas for. Years at this point that is not there anymore, and I think that that's reflected in exactly what the committee experienced. Was that there was a really good conversation, but it was not about COVID. Um, and it's, it's what the school is seeing in terms of illness and stuff like that, but predominant. The illnesses that are taking people that are causing absences or making, you know, s- staff absences, things like that. The, it's, the majority of that is not, it's other things now. Okay, it sounds like the board is comfortable with. Disbanding the. Okay, so we need a motion to. Disband, is that our correct word to use? Um, to, to disband with our really sincere gratitude and thanks um to the Progress Monitoring Committee. To um, discontinue the Progress Monitoring Committee, um, and truly. Thank you, thank you, thank you to that committee for, there were some really hard. Conversations, um, so we would need a motion to discontinue the Progress Monitoring Committee. Second, so motion from Ed and a second from Leslie, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Okay, and yeah, again, I will say thank you so much to the members of that committee, we will express our thanks to them. Um, and, and just say we know it was not an easy group to be a part of, and just in terms of. The um. The depth and the uh type of issues that we had to discuss in that group, but we really appreciate uh their work. All right, so our next agenda item is the principals report.
So I know everyone's tired, but I have to talk about. So I mentioned that I was going with a team to a conference. And we left Thursday afternoon and came back around, we got home around midnight or it was in bed at midnight um on Sunday. Saturday, I don't know what you call that, um. But it was hands down the best conference I've gone to in my life. At eleven forty-five at night, driving home, we're still all up and like talking about it. So I asked a couple of the people who went to, what would they tell you? And this is what they said. So one person said, I'm so appreciative of the opportunity, opportunity to travel with awesome colleagues to an amazing city, to hear a lineup of inspirational. And knowledgeable speakers. I look forward to collaborating with my travel buddies on how to best share what we learned. This was the best conference I have ever attended. Another one said, this was an awesome conference with so much good information. Having us all coming in with different perspectives based on our different roles, admin, counselor, teacher, para, behavior interventionist. Added to the experience and insight. Plus the added benefit of getting to spend time with my colleagues with awesome. And then the third response. As a new teacher with a year and a half under my belt, my experience at this conference was incredibly inspiring. I felt feeling refreshed and excited to share what I learned with my colleagues and my students. The people I attended with are amazing and I am glad I got the opportunity to get them, to get to know them all better. So. Sunday night on the way home, it was also decided that we're gonna give each other the week because everyone was wicked tired at that point. Um, but next week we'll get together and talk about how we can roll out some of what we learned with the staff because it truly was inspirational and incredible, so. It was a great opportunity, thank you.
Where was that conference?
San Antonio.
Questions or comments from Kristen's um report, from her written report? Thank you.
Thank you.
Lots of good updates in there, our next um agenda item is the superintendent's report.
I'm gonna ex- uh submit my report as written, although I'd like to have one discussion with you about the tractor.
Oh, yeah.
So. Toby's gonna chat. But, so, we, you know, we talked about the tractor and the budget last time, and then, you know, it seemed pretty apparent that the boards would. Saw the purpose and the reason of how much it would help. So, given the fact that we did have that tuition savings, is it something that you would want to entertain with this year's costs, which is what I put in my board report? I do want Toby to speak a little before you deliberate about what he's seeing on the market because. It, you know, he's looked at new and used, if you could just kind of take, take them through what you're seeing and what the costs are.
Yeah. For. What I feel the size, we need the average price for use. Is going for about thirty thousand to have all those implements. Um, you could go with less, build it. Um, as needed, say, you know, get a bucket loader and a snowblower than. Put a backhoe attachment on it at some point or pallet forks or whatever. But um, I did inquire on a couple of them just to see. The availabilities and these things are turning, if they become available, they're turning in the back of the, it's like pickups. It's, they're just going fast, so. Um, so the few I inquired are already gone. Um. Yeah, there's, I mean, I think you can get something fairly decent. For that price with just about all the implements, um. That's within two years old, low drill hours and such, so.
And if we went new?
New with all the attachments, the.
Well, with just. For the same amount, we talked about if you did the same amount, but new, but we have the plow. Right?
Yeah, we, we took off the backhoe, the backhoe is about nine thousand dollars, so. Um, that would get us into the thirty-one range here, so, and here again. You can take off the pallet forks and put those, cuz those are. Like twelve hundred, so you can do those, you know, maybe down the road each, each year, put an attachment on or something, but. Um. I mean, the big major use for the truck would be the winter, so you definitely want the bucket loader and the, the snow blower. Um, but. Yeah, the, the, the backhoe portion. Would have a huge use in the summer for projects. Um. So the ten, the nine to ten thousand that takes to put one of those on, I just get concerns that. It's like, take those off a new one to get within the budget. Is one thing, but would you get that ten thousand down the road to be able to put that on? Or go used or something that's a couple of years old that's still reliable? I, I'd feel comfortable going that road too, it's with lower hours and such.
So the question would be, would you be interested in entertaining it this year? And I did put in my budget memo, it is a tight budget year, right, so um. You're looking right now of somewhere between two hundred and fifty and three hundred thousand from what we've projected. You do have the tuition savings, um, but we do also have some special education concerns that could come up. So, if you wanted to do this, you would probably have to accept that if something changed, we don't know if it will. But if something changed, you might have a need to go into the special ed trust at some point. But since the snow is about to fly and since we just had this discussion. Maybe it'll snow one of these days. And then we also talked about saving the life of the truck and also our thin staff. We just thought it would. Be good to bring to you for deliberation.
Toby, was the um. Lease option still available? Was that something that we talked about last? Yeah, we. I mean, could still go. That route. And have to contact them again and get updated information.
That was also new.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, we were looking at that at that time.
So. Setting aside the concern of. That ten thousand not being there. In twenty-four or, or whatever.
Right.
Um. What would be your preferred avenue of? Let's just assume the ten thousand would be there down the road somewhere, I guess. Um, would it be? A cou- a couple of year old tractor for the thirty thousand, or would you, or would you prefer to go now?
Um, I'm comfortable with the, the. Like right now, the ones that I've actually been pricing have been John Deere's with, that are two years old with um. Some less than two hundred hours, a hundred hours. I'm comfortable with those, I mean, like you said, we're not gonna beat it to death type thing here, so I, I think the longevity. Yeah, I, I would have no qualms when you. Picking it out from a dealership, get those come with a warranty still. Yeah, I'd be finicky with them, but I think, I think it's definitely doable. And it's, it's not a bad move at all, I don't think.
We have about four hundred thousand in special education trust, is that what?
Yeah, a little over that, I think, so we just have an update that I brought.
Yeah, if we did have. Some special education things that come up this year, we have. The trust that we can.
You, you can go into it.
Yeah.
As always, we try not to have those expenses, but we do have. A couple of special ed situations that could cost us something this year. I sort of think we should strike while iron's hot on this, I feel like we're kicking a lot of cans down the road.
Yeah.
This physical plant, and this seems like a kind of a no-brainer, especially the way supply and chains are going, I'm just like, if we can. Get it, and we can basically make it work on the budget front, like, I'd rather do it.
I also think we have some big other items that we're gonna, we're gonna be looking at in February. Take this, take this off the February.
Correct.
I mean. Maybe you, you tell us, but. You know, I, I think I would be looking at allocate up to say like thirty-five thousand. Give you a little bit of wiggle room, but what I'd hate to have is allocate thirty thousand and the thing come in at thirty-two thousand.
Yeah.
It's like, I gotta get my picker and abilities and if we did do some of that thirty.
Yeah, so yeah. I think I would feel comfortable, you know, giving you a little bit of wiggle room to, you know, up to thirty-five and then.
Yeah, then.
It gives you, again, these things are moving so quickly. You don't wanna miss out on something because of fifteen hundred bucks.
Meredith, when you gave me the last budget and revenue expense and we were looking at like. Where we were right now, did that include the tuition break or not include the tuition break? I think it. I hadn't taken the students out yet, right?
Correct.
Okay, so, yeah.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we need a motion.
If you wanna, if you want to do it this year.
Yeah.
As opposed to next year's budget, then yes.
Yeah. And how does the board feel about what Ed was proposing in terms of pumping that to have that little bit of a? Buffer. Yeah. Okay, so we need a motion to allocate um. Up to thirty-five thousand dollars from the current budget for the purchase of a tractor. So we have a motion from Leslie and a second from Denise, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed, say nay. Excellent, now you can add it to the ad, you need to hire people, we talked about that last month. We have a tractor.
Right. Do you think he's gonna let anyone else use it?
It doesn't have to say you get to drive it. It actually says Toby. In the font. What else from your report, Sydney? Anything else that you wanted to highlight or have you heard anything from first student?
Uh, yes, we're in negotiations.
Okay, thank you.
Come back to you in January.
Thank you.
Yeah, um, I did wanna just say something on a, like a personal slash professional note is that um I was appointed. Uh, Chair of the um New Hampshire State Equity Committee for School Administrators. Awesome, yeah, I'm excited about doing that work, looking around the entire state and seeing what's going on. We're gonna be carefully watching legislation for equity concerns.
Good, thank you. Good, thank you. Any other questions for Sydney from her report? Okay. Alright, so our next agenda item is the consent agenda. Uh, any changes or things we folks wanna pull out of the consent agenda? Okay, so we need a motion to approve the consent agenda. I have a motion from Leslie and a second from Ed. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Okay, we have our second public participation session to open. Um, so our public has diminished in person. I don't know if we still have folks that are joining us virtually, Sydney. But we'll open our second public participation, um, and
We have one public on. Mrs. Islander is with us.
Um, so.
We can ask her what she's having.
If, and hopefully she's eating it by now. If anyone would like to participate in public participation, just a reminder to please state your name and address at the beginning of the comments and we'll leave pu- the public participation open for a couple of minutes here, um, and then we'll see what we get. While we're doing that, do you have non-public tonight?
I have nothing. I don't have any non-public either.
Yeah, right.
How is the path?
Wonderful. I'll share.
I got to hold.
Okay, so I don't see any public comment coming in online and I don't have, we don't have um, anyone who's looking to comment here in the room, so we will go ahead and adjourn our public comment for tonight. Any other business or anything else that the board needs to have come up tonight? Our next meeting is January third. Alright, so. I need a motion to adjourn. I have a motion from Leslie and a second from Ed. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, say nay. We are adjourned at nine twenty-three. Thank you, everybody. That was